We had an executive session, so I'd like to call this meeting of the regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to Order for June 12th, 2018. Present is Ms. Pittgall, Ms. Lieber, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Phil Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon, Connolly, and Mr. Peterson. If I could ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the three meetings that we have tonight, the one that we just had, the regular meeting, and then another executive session following this meeting, I would only encourage board members to be concise in your questions and comments, so that it's in your best interest to do so, so that we are getting out of here at some reasonable hour. Having said that, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Any member of the public that wishes to come forward and speak on any of the business items on our agenda, please feel free to come forward and state your name and address.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Ethan Larkin. I'm a junior at Fairfield Ward High School. First, I'd like to start by saying thank you for allowing me time to speak to you. I'd like to comment on the fact that the AP Studio Art class at Fairfield Ward High School has been cut in half, and I'd like to state my comments and opinions on that. AP Studio Art is the only AP level slash higher level of education class for art offered at Fairfield Ward High School, and the fact that it's been cut in half is really disappointing because a few months, not a few months, like a month ago, I was one of the designers of some of those posters, and I was talked to by you, Dr. Tony Jones, and our first elect in Mike Tetro, and they said to me that they really respected art in our community and that they really wanted to continue investment into it. However, this recent move seemed contrary to that, and I seem, I'm pretty disappointed in that move. The time that we have in those classes is incredibly important, and I've been trying to take this class for a long time, so having it being cut in half simply due to budgetary restraints seems, again, disappointing. I don't, I'm not a budget expert, obviously, however, I feel like saying that you want to invest in art and then doing something like this is not okay personally. I think it's disrespectful to your constituents, and although I am not an active voter, I will be an active voter by the time our first selectman and other local government officials are up for reelection in 2019, and I will vote for the grades below me and to make sure that their voices are heard and represented. So I just wanted to state that, and with that, I'd like to say thank you, and I'm done.
Thank you for coming out and sharing your viewpoint. We normally give students a little bit of latitude, and so I determined that since we were talking about the graduation requirements, and that's essentially curriculum, and he was essentially talking about curriculum, it all fit. Any other member of the public wish to come forward and speak on a subject that is on our agenda?
Hi.
Welcome.
But I had a different question. I do some volunteer work for Sandy Hook Promise, and through the Stop School Violence Act that was passed by Congress, there's going to be grants available to bring some of their programs to their school, like if you see something, say something, start with hello, know the signs, and I'm wondering who I can funnel that information to and if Fairfield is interested in going for a grant to bring programs like this to the schools.
It's always best to send information to our superintendent and let her get it to the correct staff person.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Any other member of the public wish to come forward? Seeing none. We're onto a presentation, and we have a PowerPoint, so you need us out of here, right?
Use a clicker? Do you want me to click?
You're going to start, right?
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Tony Jones, School Superintendent, for those who are watching at home. We're delighted to be here tonight to present our vision of the graduate, and I just want to mention some people that have worked very hard on this all year long as part of our seminar group and full-day meetings. Greg Hatzis, our Headmaster at Ludlow, David Ebling, Headmaster at Ward, also Vanessa Montorsi, and I know she is in the audience tonight, Karen Campbell, Patrice Vigella, Paul Rasmussen, Charles Flynn, and I did see him in the audience as well, Sarah Kemper, and then of course, our Chief Academic Officer, Mike Cummings. We want to start tonight just talking a little bit about the journey, and when we talk about the journey, first of all, we're going to talk about the what, and by what it means, what do we want our students to know and be able to do when they leave Fairfield Public Schools? And the how, how will we measure that they have achieved mastery on those items? And the work, how does the district improvement plan support the vision of the graduate to make sure our students meet mastery? And this was first shared back with the board in October, this past October, where we talked about the transformational series, and then we talked about it again in December about the workshop that was hosted by CAPS. This is basically just a picture of how we are tying everything together for our district improvement plan. Of course, everything we do in the district starts with the mission statement at the top, and we'll look at that in just a minute, just as a reminder, but when you look at the top of that, what you're seeing is the what, that's the vision of the graduate. Again, that's what we want our students to leave us with when they go off to college. On each side of that, it's the how. We have academic expectations, and we also have social and civic expectations, and all of the work that we do at the bottom, the initiatives, everything that we do should tie back into that vision of the graduate to meet the vision of the school district. If we look at the district mission, I just want to point out a couple of things. It's a long mission statement, but I think the last part of that statement is probably the most important, and that's the comprehensive educational program, and it really does guide the ethos of our district. When we look at that, that's one reason we have chosen to put a STEAM program, for instance, in elementary instead of STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. We also have social and civic expectations, but that includes emotional, physical, mental health wellness. It really is a well-rounded school district, and when we talk about the A in STEAM, it really is vocational, unified art, fine arts, and you'll even hear about that tonight in the graduation requirements.
So I'm David Ebling. I'm the Headmaster at Fairfield Ward High School, and I get to do the what. This actually is our vision of the graduate, so after much of the work that Dr. Jones mentioned, the group proposed that this would become our mission statement or the vision for the graduate, the fulfillment of the mission for all students pre-K-12+, demands our ongoing commitment to realize the vision of the graduate, and all students will be these six characteristics. Often, you see mission statements or vision statements written in paragraphs or sentences, and our group really wanted to focus on these six attributes of our students as they graduate from Fairfield Public Schools. Collaborators, communicators, critical thinkers, responsible citizens, innovators, and goal-directed, resilient learners. So someone would look at this and say, well, there's a lot of words out there. Why these words? Where did these words come from? How did it come? You spent a whole year coming up with six words, and what did it actually represent? What kind of work happened along the way to get to those six words? And we're going to show you that now. When you develop something like a vision of a graduate, we wanted it to be as inclusive as process as possible. As you know, we have a lot of constituents in our district, students being foremost, and then of course, parents, teachers, administrators, support staff, et cetera. How did we include these people in developing our vision of the graduate for Fairfield Public Schools? And what did we look at to get to that? As Dr. Jones mentioned, of course, we start with all things with the mission of the district. That came directly from the district improvement plan. You'll see some of those words that are in our vision of the graduate that come from the, directly from the district improvement plan. Our academic expectations that we've been working on for many years at both high schools vary, I believe when we came in December, we showed you some of the chronology of how we have worked on those academic expectations from 1999 to 2009 and even to present day, and some of those words are directly from there. As well as the social and civic expectations, you'll see those a little later. Unique to the schools, because that's what I think makes Fairfield Ludlow High School what it is and Fairfield Ward High School as well, and that included teachers, students, and parents. Our systemic transformation series, which we referred to already, which was a team that went to Fairfield Public Schools, we'll talk a little bit about that, some of the words that came from there. Our community conversation with families, I know many of you were present on what was a memorable St. Patrick's Day morning in the cafeteria at Fairfield Ludlow High School, some words from there as well. And then our district leadership team, if you recall, when I went back to the vision, we're looking at pre-K-12+. We're looking at schools from the beginning of Fairfield Public Schools all the way through to the end, so how did the administrative group from our district leadership team help to develop this vision by looking at some of our words and ranking them? So what we did with the district leadership team is we gave them 10 words, not just six, we gave them these 10 words that are here. These were key words that came from our district improvement plan, from the parent group, some of what was already in our academic expectations, and we asked them to rank what they considered to be the six most important from the work that they do with their students pre-K through 12. So you can see how some of those words came up as well. So again, not the ones that actually ended in our vision of the graduate, but you can start to see some of the work and some of this very similar thinking from different groups that helped us to present those six words that we're going to end with. The community conversation, as I mentioned, on March 17th, we had about 60 parents, as well as some of the board members were there, some other district leadership staff as well, and building administrators, and we took the 60 members that were there kind of through a process, ending with what did they want for their children to graduate from Fairfield Public Schools? What kind of attributes did they want? And then we had a gallery walk, you can see some of that here, going around, looking at what some of the other groups, I think we were in tables of about eight or 10, and then kind of moving around the room and ranking what we really thought were the top seven that we came out with. So a little bit different here. You see things like flexibility, adaptability, resilience. That was, for some of us in the schools, that was a surprising one, I think, that came out from the parent group as really a top attribute, that they were looking for their children to develop that sense of resiliency, self-advocacy or initiative, personal responsibility. But again, you start to see some of those similar words that we see that will come out in our vision, that creativity, the innovation, et cetera. Dr. Jones identified the members of the systemic transformation district team that went to the seminars. We attended five seminars in lovely Cromwell, Connecticut, off of 91. Five seminars focused on creating a district vision of the graduate and the systemic changes needed to fulfill that. So I'll look to my colleagues, but I believe there were probably about 20 districts represented there, all with about teams of 10 people, so it was a large group and a great kind of think tank, because we were able to build off of one another. They brought in, CASP brought in two national facilitators, Ken Kay, who leads Ed Leader 21, and Jay McTie, who many of you may know from his work on backward design, understanding, planning by backward design. So the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent sponsored the conference, and we had an all-day session there on four of the seminars, and then we spent a seminar time among our district leadership team, kind of really working at honing what we wanted in Fairfield. We connected it, obviously, to our academic expectation work already, and we needed to align this with our NEASC accreditation process in which both high schools are currently engaged. We talked briefly also about this, I believe, in December, that Fairfield Ward High School will be going through their initial visit, called a collaborative conference visit, in October of this coming year, and then Fairfield Ludlow, their full visit in the spring of 2019. So one of the, all of these groups kind of aligning for the same purpose, and one of the criteria for NEASC is certainly to have a school system that knows what their vision of the graduate looks like. Here where the goals of the transformation workshop was to identify the stakeholder groups, which we've indicated to you that we've already elicited response from, and then determining the final vision. If you saw, I believe, Dr. Jones, and you'll see it again, portrayed the graphic of our vision of the graduate, and I wouldn't want to show you some of our initial attempts at that. We've come a long way, so certainly identifying some of our systems and processes, courses that we use to develop that. You've already seen some changes, you'll see some tonight, things like the new graduation requirements that are coming in from the state for the class of 2023, some of those areas, you've seen us do some work, for example, in things like reducing, or I would say actually expanding, not reducing, by removing that strict requirement of the CIS course to looking at other courses that fulfill our technology requirement for students starting next year, and working with our pre-K-8 group to allow for that system-wide alignment. So the vision of the graduate doesn't start in ninth grade. It's not just a high school requirement. Certainly, it's something we want for all of our students that will look differently, but certainly we want for all of our students in pre-K-8. And Mr. Hatzis, we'll talk about the how.
Thank you, David. Greg Hatzis, Headmaster for Fairfield Ludlow High School, and you know, David mentioned the logo or the picture. We've always had a lighthouse. We knew we had to have a lighthouse, so we're happy that that stayed in. So the two main ways in which we will be demonstrating, or our students will be demonstrating that they've met the vision, is through the academic expectations and the social and civic expectations, and you'll notice on the previous slide that it said PK to 12, and one of the things that I wanted to just point out is that as, although these were generated with stakeholders that were connected more to the high schools, as we shared them with our colleagues and as the central office staff shared them with our colleagues in the middle and elementary schools, what we saw was a real engagement and excitement from their part in saying, now we know where this is all going, and this is what we can articulate to our teachers and our students and our parents, and they immediately started brainstorming ways in which they could create versions from the middle and elementary schools, and I think Mr. Cummings will be talking a little bit about that. So that's, it is a PK through 12-plus vision. The other thing, you'll notice this phrase, reflect 21st century skills. We have sort of a running joke, we're already 18 years into the 21st century, can we figure it out yet? And I think tonight, what's exciting for us is that we can put this phrase to bed. It's been, you know, a part of our language for a long time, and really, what it even, you know, a lot of people say, well, what does it even refer to? And I think if you look at the vision of the graduate, that is what we're talking about, okay? That's what has always been, you know, some version of those things have been referred to as 21st century skills, but what's important is that they reflect the rapid change in our society that we are all, you know, experiencing, whether through technology or information, or information through technology, or whatever it might be, there is just this rapid change, and one thing that you'll hear, you know, I think there's a video we'll be showing you later, part of the point of creating these skills for students and asking them to demonstrate them is that we are trying to prepare our students for jobs that we don't even know exist yet. So what are those types of skills that will help you achieve those goals? And obviously, you have all been exposed to these multiple times, but for the audience at home, you know, the academic expectations are very instrumental in guiding our instruction and assessment, and they will be met through the successful implementation of our curriculum and strong instructional practice, which we're always working on and honing our skills on. Little historical perspective, as Mr. Ebling mentioned, we have had the academic expectations as part of our district for a long time. We, through the New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation process back in 1999 at Fairfield High School, then again in 2004, because there's a five-year plan that, or a five-year update that's required, and then when Ludlow High School opened in '06, or I'm sorry, you know, '05, first graduating class in '06, their first accreditation visit was in '08 with Ward following, excuse me, shortly behind in '09, and in each of those, you know, we had created a new version of the academic expectations or small tweaks, and what we had learned through those processes and back then was, they said, you need to incorporate 21st century skills. So that was part of the start of our journey in terms of the feedback we got from NEASC and how we've changed them since. Our current iteration really, you know, took form in 2014, and over the course of the last few years, as teachers have practiced, the academic expectations, they've developed assessments and performance-based activities and tasks for the students. We honed the language and made it more of a, if you will, a continuum of skills, and that version was in, you know, just last year that we completed it, so, and now we are. And here they are, and I know you've seen these many times, but one of the first things I'll point out is just, if you look right at the top line, basically, there's, you know, two main strands. There's the critical and creative thinking, and then there's communicating and collaborating, and once again, you'll see all four of those words in our vision of the graduate. So these are tied together intricately, and the explanations that are below basically take those terms and help define them more specifically. So if you're just, you know, you're saying a vision of the graduate, what is a collaborator? Here is a place where someone can go to help understand what we mean by that, you know, and see the specifics, like in collaborating strategically, what we're saying is that, you know, you don't just get together on a table and talk, okay? That's not collaborating, but students taking into account prior knowledge, beliefs, and experiences, not only themselves, but the other people in their group, they understand their roles and relationships within the group, and then the groups, they understand that there is a purpose to that collaborating. What is the strategic part of getting together with other people and trying to come up with a new idea? So just an example of how we further define. These are the rubrics that the teachers are using to score the students, and as you can see, it's a developmental and holistic rubric where we rank, there are four levels, below standard, developing, achieving, and exemplary, and you know, what you'll notice is that really the skills that are outlined here are, the expectation is that students are at the three and four, the achieving and exemplary level, by the time that they graduate in their senior year. So what that means is that as a ninth grader, you might demonstrate a certain level of mastery of the curriculum, so that might get you a particular grade in that class, but that doesn't necessarily mean that in the academic expectations, you're at the level in which we are expecting students to be, you know, in their junior and senior year. So just as an aside, it is possible that students could be, again, mastering the curriculum, you know, getting an A or a B, but they still might be developing in their skills as they move towards these really important graduation goals. We are reporting out on these for the first time this year. Students will be seeing them, and parents will be seeing them if they haven't already, on their report cards and in Infinite Campus, and so we're trying to get ahead of the curve. It is part of the accreditation process that we report out on this, and we have many teachers who go on visits to other districts as part of the NEASC accreditation, like as evaluators, and they come back and telling us, boy, we are, we're doing great. I mean, the fact that we are reporting out already prior to the visit, where many schools at the visit are just figuring out how to report out, and that process will evolve for us as well. Real quickly on the social and civic expectations, as Mr. Ebling mentioned, each school engaged in its own process to, you know, get together with their various stakeholders, take the input, and talk a lot about the same things that we've mentioned already, but you'll notice some key terms that keep coming up over and over no matter where, responsible, responsibility, citizen, citizenship, and of course, what's our term? It's responsible citizenship in the, in the, in the vision of a graduate. You also see the importance of community as well, or the world around you, and these common threads, even though that these were developed completely different places and different, in different locations and with different processes, really, they still come back to the same things, and those threads are what are exhibited in the vision of a graduate. Those things will happen through our advisory lessons, through book choices, you know, the library is buying and, you know, promoting with summer reading, or even just through the regular class discussions that happen. This will happen with programming that we do with the students, so they'll, these will show themselves in many ways in the work that we do with our students. Just a quick example of how very recently you had a school help sponsor a pump for water in an African nation, and, you know, exhibiting that this really is a global society that we live in, but at the same time, we value very much the contributions right here at home to our local community and the ways in which we interact with each other every day. So both of those strands are part of this work.
Good evening. I'm Mike Cummings, the Chief Academic Officer, and I'm going to speak tonight about the work that's involved now, essentially in operationalizing the academic expectations. Our headmasters have spoken to all the work that's gone before, this iteration that you're seeing tonight. It's important to remember that most of that work, and rightfully so, has been at the high school level, but never have we approached this work as that's where, as Mr. Hatzis said, that it would actually begin in ninth grade. The ownership of the academic expectations, and in some degree, we're paralleling our conversations we can have about the graduation requirements, the ownership of those is a pre-K-12-plus ownership. So our work begins on preparing students to meet these expectations when they're into our school system. Everything is tempered by the fact that it's developmentally appropriate for the age level and the grades in which students are engaged in the work, but beginning students at an early age in the type of expectations that the academic expectations hold is important. Now, making that happen is going to be much of the work of the district in the next few years. So as you can see, these are essentially the work that we have to go ahead at the high school, and I won't read all of that to you, but I want to point out a couple of things. The, one of the first bullet refers to the fact that as we begin to look at the academic expectations and we see where opportunities exist for those to happen in classes, we have a responsibility now to make sure that all students are going to have an equal opportunity to be part of those academic expectations. So they have to have equal opportunities at all six. We've got to look at the distribution of those in core classes as well as electives. We have a responsibility then, as we work with our teachers, to give them the necessary professional learning opportunities to engage in what those academic expectations require, to have conversations with each other about the work they're seeing from students, and as well, we have an obligation to ensure that all students, when students are struggling to meet those expectations, that we intervene appropriately to support them in their learning. So how, what does that look like? You know, essentially, what it does is it begins to guide an SRBI model at the, at the secondary level, both middle school and high school, identifying where students are, where the gap is between their achievement and the expectations, and working with them to fill in that gap. So that's, that's much of our work over the next few years. We have assessments, assessments to build. One of the things we must make sure is that in a system as large as ours, that students are seeing a common type of assessment in their courses, so no matter who the teacher is, no matter how long that person's been teaching the course, the students are seeing, seeing the same type of assessment, and with that, it's a responsibility on our -- to have conversations with each other about the work they're seeing from students. And as well, we have an obligation to ensure that all students, when students are struggling to meet those expectations, that we intervene appropriately to support them in their learning. So how, what does that look like? You know, essentially what it does is it begins to guide an SRBI model at the secondary level, both middle school and high school, identifying where students are, where the gap is between their achievement and the expectations, and working with them to fill in that gap. So that's much of our work over the next few years. We have assessments to build. One of the things we must make sure is that, in a system as large as ours, that students are seeing a common type of assessment in their courses. So no matter who the teacher is, no matter how long that person's been teaching the course, the students are seeing the same type of assessment. And with that, it's a responsibility on our part to make sure that the teachers have opportunity to collaborate on the student answers and to work together on improving their instruction. The greatest engine of school reform is teachers working together on their own instruction, giving information back and forth to each other, learning from the student work, and responding to it. It's in that work that you move district work forward and increase student achievement. The elementary and middle school, as Mr. Hatzis said, over the course of the year, as these have evolved, I've been sharing them with both the elementary principals and the middle school administrators. There is, it isn't an understatement to say there's a lot of excitement in the ranks around what these academic expectations offer for our students and the potential for we as a school system to align behind them. So as it says here, both the middle school and elementary have identified a need to think about what that academic expectation looks like in an eighth-grade model and in a fifth-grade model, and then to begin to work through that model, again, educating our staff, but beginning to think of the assessments that are needed that we can help make sure students are on track to achieve those things. And again, they'd be developmentally appropriate. And again, similar to the high school model, what you'd be developing in an eighth-grade one is an eighth-grade expectation that sixth-grade students will begin to work with. The fifth-grade expectation would be a fifth-grade, expectation for fifth-grade students, and again, what students in the lower grades would begin to work towards. The district improvement plan, as you know, is organized around these essential areas. So without going into detail right now, we are, we have, in support of the academic expectations across the district in pre-K 12, there's elements of this that really take place across the district improvement plan as well. And you'll see the threads of that work from both organizational, leadership, instructional, all those needs need to be equally met in order to support the full development of the academic expectations. Okay. I get the task of making sure the video works now. So we, Dr. Jones worked with our administrators across the district to identify circumstances over the last few weeks where our students were fulfilling the vision of the graduate. The work, so again, I think it's important to point out that while we're putting in words what we expect of our students, this work has already begun in many ways, and now our work is really to unite behind it.
Then are the future biotechnicians, musicians, graphic artists, and inventors who will solve the problems of our world? The vision for our Fairfield graduates is powerful. It's a future focus, and the time is now. We are preparing students to communicate effectively with others, to be future collaborators, and solve complex everyday problems. Critical thinkers focused on solutions. Innovators thinking about what doesn't exist but could exist. Setting goals and having the resiliency to persist. Our vision is to foster responsible, well-rounded citizens who go out and make a difference in this world. Fairfield, vision of a graduate, planning for future jobs that don't exist right now, and a generation of people who are going to make this planet a sustainable, positive, and thoughtful place. Fairfield Public Schools, vision of a graduate, our vision for the future.
And I might just say thank you to all of the teachers and the principals that, you know, allowed people to come in and film, but, and thank you to our students. There is a document that you have at your seat, and it's just to kind of give you a preview of the vision of the graduate and the district improvement going forward. And it is, it's a draft, and it says at the top. Oh, we could, sure. We're going to turn the lights on and shift back to our seats. Yes, thank you. So the document that you have in front of you is kind of a preview. Usually you would wait and see this in the fall, but this is the work that we will be working with our district leadership team through in the summer when we have part of our advance. And it really is to continue the work of the district improvement plan. When you look at this document we've tied, some of what you saw in the video, again, appears in here, just so that it's, the logo is there, the words are there, the graphic that helps us understand how we tie everything together. But then what you also see is the staff work plan. And in the instructional program, you'll see where there's 17, and it's on page five, the 17 key implementations. We're going to tie all of those to communicator and collaborator, critical thinker and innovator, just to make sure that the work we're doing is connecting to everything that we're saying that our students should be able to do in the vision of the graduate. And our district leadership team will be looking at this again at their advance in August and probably have tweaks before it comes back to you. And tonight, the board does look at a draft calendar, and it's on the calendar as part of the superintendent's report, district priorities, that would come back on August 28th to you, after we've had a chance to work on it this summer.
And presumably, we'd vote at it like we traditionally do here at one meeting and vote at the next meeting, based on where the board is interested.
No, thank you very much, and thank you to the team for, that worked all year long, actually, on this. It's really kind of interesting that it took a whole year to get six words. But there was so much debate in just which words, and as I see Charles sitting out there, I still remember a statement he made. We debated forever, do you put a statement underneath each word about what, to define the word? And I loved what he said, because he felt like, he said it would actually limit creativity for our teachers. And so we left the words, there's six words for our teachers also to be able to interpret how they feel and what they can do in their classrooms. So it was a great, I think, a great year for us to kind of tie it all together.
Questions from the board on the presentation and the top, and the document?
Yeah, I guess this would be for either Mr. Hatzis or Mr. Ebling. Just with the numbers that are now showing up in Infinite Campus, the, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, because I did actually notice that, and for one split second, I was like, "What is this?" And then I was like, "Oh, that's right, I remember." But I know that there have been some parents who have been confused, and I know that information did go out, but is, are there plans to kind of re-remind parents a few more times and maybe have something on the websites or send out another thing on Infinite Campus? Just because I think there is still some confusion from some parents who I'm sure got the email, but just got lost in the shuffle, so.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Maxine Connolly?
All right, a few. First of all, to Dr. Jones, just so I'm clear, and I apologize, I was organizing papers, and so your comment about the memo?
Yes.
In front of us? And again, I apologize. What is it that's contained in here, again, that we're looking at in August?
This really is the draft, and this is, will be the update for our district improvement plan, and this is the work plan that outlines for 18, 19, 19, 20. What is it that we're going to focus on? And when you get to pages, let me just find, page five, you'll see where it has the staff work plan. It takes like instructional program, which has been in our district improvement plan the whole time. Now we've broken that apart into communicators and collaborator, critical thinkers and innovators. So you can see the work that is supporting the actual vision of the graduate. And I know in here, I was just trying to find it, there is something also on parent communication, which goes along with academic expectations, because we know we need to continue to have those community conversations so people understand it.
So is this purely a matter of organizing it differently, or are some of these points different?
Well, most of what's in here is different. I mean, if you look at what we have in the budget as far as something like critical thinking and innovators, implementing our STEAM program, if you went back two years ago, that wouldn't have appeared anywhere. That was part of our discussion this year, that was an outgrowth of, you know, speaking with elementary principals, what are the needs, what's going into the budget? And you can find things like that woven throughout all of the work plan.
So I guess I'm unclear, and if we're going to be voting on this, or is it, August will be a more formal presentation of?
Yes.
What's actual language changes?
This is an early read.
Okay.
In August, it'll be a first read, in September, we will vote.
So August, it will be clear, here's old language, here's new language being proposed?
Yes, somewhat, yes. I would say, I'm not sure that we'll go line by line on old language, new language, because some of the old things, we've already marked off, and we did that this year.
Right.
Because so much of it was already completed. And if you remember that whole data section, when we did our data presentation in October, the entire leader's team changed that whole presentation in making it more about the work that was actually happening in the classroom and not just the numbers, which we got great feedback on that. So you wouldn't see that old section come back again in August. But you'll see things we've been working on in here. I mean, really, academic expectations, we've been working on, you know, for the entire time of the improvement plan.
Okay. All right, so, okay, going through my questions. First of all, and also in, sorry, in that same memo on page two, on the, page one, excuse me, where it says, "Mission, long-term goal, and educational goals," and those two points in yellow. So should I assume that this is going to come to policy? Because this is actually policy 0200, so.
Right. Yeah, it does actually, it does mention that in the memo section, because that's why it's in yellow, because that is in policy. And it's really that debate, does the board want us to bring it back and update that from the policy in the fall? That's why it's in yellow. We thought it was probably important, and Mike and I had had this discussion, that as part of our educational goals, given every, all the work that we've done and where we are, that we would want to say that mastery of academic expectations is a goal, and also to perform at high level for social and civic. So that will be work for the board.
Okay. Then back to the slideshow, let me just find the questions. In, sorry, sorry. Go to find which questions. Where am I going to start here? Actually, why don't I start with the academic expectations? I'll figure out the rest of my questions. And I was hoping that, because Dr. Jones, in the last policy meeting, you gave a very good example of these academic expectations. I don't know if our administrators have gotten questions from parents. There's been plenty online regarding, "My student got an award in culinary arts, and yet, according to these expectations, he's a one." And you gave the great example in policy that if somebody in PE gets a one, that does not mean they're a slow runner.
Right.
So I was wondering if you could give an example of how in PE, one of these would be measured, or in one of the electives or anything like that, so that for anyone who's still paying attention in June, we're starting the education process of what this looks like in the courses. That again, a one in PE does not mean they're a slow runner.
And are you looking for that tonight, or are you suggesting it would be good to put that kind of an example, so there's clarity in the document?
I think hearing it now would be helpful. I mean, I know that these are changing, so this isn't committing to that as an assessment, but just as an example.
I only ask the questions so that Mr. Hatzis could have an extra minute to.
That's fine.
So part of our process with teachers, you know, when we first started to ask them to implement these in their classrooms, what we did is we sort of went whole hog, if you will. We asked them to like, at all six, all six indicators within it, develop performance-based assessments around those six, and start teaching the skills of the students and assessing them. The feedback that we got that year was that it was, you know, too much too soon. And, you know, basically, what we did is we, in order to help everybody focus, we scaled back and we asked the teachers to maybe pick two or three academic expectations for their classes and really do them well. So each department then would, you know, took it upon themselves. And so, you know, I don't want to focus only on PE, but, you know, in any, in any area. As they started to say, you know, here's what the rubric says, these are the lessons that we teach around those skills, these are the assessments that we give in order to assess kids. Those conversations, you know, were happening with students, you know, all throughout this year. Getting any particular score, and, you know, if it's a one that we focus on, could be a variety of reasons. In PE class in particular, if they design an activity where students had to convey ideas, you know, maybe it was to explain a process to their peers in order to, you know, serve a badminton birdie well, you know, those types of things. They were taking the academic expectations and translating them into their curriculum. So one might be reflective of a student who decided they didn't want to engage in that, in that process, you know, in March of their junior year or senior year or something. It could be that they, they were still struggling to understand fully what was being expected of them. Their GPAs are not affected in any way, shape, or form. These, this really was a pilot year for us in terms of reporting back, helping students, you know, understand them. And obviously, the conversation that you're going to have later tonight about the placement of the academic expectations as part of the larger role in the, in graduation requirements will certainly help with those conversations that we have moving forward.
Which is exactly what my next question was, so just to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ebling, did you want to add that?
I was just going to say, you might see it somewhere too in PE with something like fitness. So let's say they were looking at exploring and understanding and developing a fitness plan tailored to themselves. So they were exposed to a number of fitness plans, but then they were going to look at research and methodologies and develop one personally for themselves, lifelong skill that they might want to have. And then if you look at our rubric in some of these areas, much of it is with limited support, continuous support, independent learning. So that might be a way that you would see something like that measured in PE.
Thank you. And then, just to confirm for the board, because these academic expectations we're referencing right now, that was that .5 mastery-based assured skill experience where these six were named. And so just to be clear, on the transcript, what ultimately is all that would appear is .5 credit. So those numbers, just if, to make sure I'm clear about that, those numbers will not appear. They have no impact on GPA. It is solely for the .5 credit.
So, yes, if they achieve a level on the rubric.
That's correct.
Then they'll get the .5 credit. So that's how you would know. They would achieve, you know, achieving or exemplary.
Okay. So that was that question, and out of curiosity, how do you ensure, as you're building all of these assessments, that they don't get passed down from one generation to the next, from one grade to the next? If they're having an assured freshman year experience, how do you ensure that that's not going to be inherited by an eighth grader? Beyond the whole ethical issue, how are you actually operationalizing that?
Well, I think we had conversations with the program directors, myself, around the building of these assessments. We are looking, I want to be clear that where they already exist in some form or another, I've been affiliated program directors, but those are the ones we should be utilizing. We have a lot of work to do in a relatively quick period of time. I don't want to engage in building things when something might already exist and be of high quality. But I think we're going to have to make these, we're going to have to be careful about the timing of them during the course of the school year. We don't want to do too many of them. These are just some questions I want to put out while I'm addressing this topic. And then, then I think we're going to have to essentially hold on to the assessments after they're done, give the student, work with the students on their work, and give their results back. But I don't think, I'm not a, you know, the assessment difference here is that the, they're not content area questions necessarily that somebody could memorize. It's a task that students engage in, so you can change the parameters of the task in the content. You could change the situation, if you're talking about a European history class and apply, you know, a situation from World War I, the following year, you could apply it in World War II. So the content will shift, but the level of learning and the expectation for the demonstration of that learning would essentially remain the same. So oftentimes, in these types of assessments, there's a very similar approach to the. So oftentimes in these types of assessments, there's a very similar approach to the expectation for the skill, but it's now applying the content.
Another way to look at it too is that they, this maybe, this won't be boiling down to one assessment and the performance on one assessment. I mean, we know how, we know how many assessments the students are facing, you know, both on a standardized form and whatnot. But really, this program gives teachers the opportunity to assess these skills over the course of entire year. So that final grade, if you will, you know, that appears in infinite campus, you know, is the culmination of several attempts over the course of time. As we start now, you know, teachers might be relying more on, you know, a couple of assessments, but then, you know, as this develops, you know, that, that will be something that they're very well aware of and the students are well aware of. The best assessments, you know, students can know exactly what it is. When we use essential questions in the classroom, I mean, if US history class, if you answer the question, what is an American? You know, we can tell everybody what the question is, it doesn't matter. It's the performance that they show. And especially if we have the students demonstrating the skill right there in front of the teacher. You know, if it's not a take-home project where you have no idea, you know, really if they're, they're doing it themselves or not, they have those opportunities in class all the time to demonstrate their learning right there in that, in that setting.
And speaking of home, I was curious about on the goals for 2018, 2020 slide where you said, expand high school, home-to-school connection in understanding the purpose and value of the academic expectations. Because we're obviously already seeing that there's a little bit of lack of information, not for lack of effort from leadership of informing people. So I'm curious what steps you're taking to ensure that.
Well, and again, that's a direct reference to Ms. Gerbert's question to, you know, as we expand these down into elementary grades, into the middle school grades, we've got to, we have a corresponding need to educate our parents. I mean, we've had conversations that, given the prominence of these, as a topic for open house nights and, and I think that we as a school system would benefit from, in our communications with parents, sharing the learning journey we're on as well. So as we apply these and we learn from them, being transparent with our, our community about what we are learning and how we're learning it and what changes as a result of that learning.
Okay. And actually, and I did want to say, I love, I can only bet how excited middle school and elementary school were, seeing where they're going and then seeing how they're going to be able to adopt some of it. I look forward to seeing that. My last question was from that same slide where it's provide educational, excuse me, professional learning to all staff so they can provide innovative classrooms. I was wondering about the nature, and again, because obviously I could see that being a budget impact one, and yet an important one and important to support. Do you have any idea of what that's going to look like? I mean, what's the PD for innovative classrooms?
Well, I think, I have a good sense of what it's going to look like. I think it's, I think one of the things that has to change in our conceptual, conceptualizing these, this professional learning is it's, is it's not so much about, you know, an environmental classroom design that's innovative. Because out of context, that won't take. You know, people, people, some people may naturally gravitate to that, but out of context, that won't take. But if we think about the type of learning that we want to have happen in classrooms, and if you take just even example, the collaboration, how do we, how do, classrooms that promote collaboration, that have an expectation that students will be working together to solve, you know, difficult problems, the environmental setup changes. You see this already happening in, you know, in our elementary classrooms and elementary classrooms in many districts where the, the traditional desk format has gone away and has been replaced by tables. There, there's an allowance here that this is how we want students to have more free flow in their classrooms. So I think that as you promote the, the level of learning and the expectations for the student outputs, the, the response will be that the environment, in this particular case, the environment would, would change as a result. You can't, you can't have an array of desks and expect collaboration to occur. It's just not going to happen. So those are the types of things that will, will change. And I think the innovation in instruction will change as you start to think about, as you design your lessons and you design your outcomes of your lessons, how do I promote the critical thinking? How do I promote those things at the academic expectations? A standard deliver type of curricular model, instructional model is not going to play either anymore. So that's how I see it happening.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Other questions, Ms. Lieber?
Thank you for this. I think this is really, is this, is this working? I think this is really exciting from like also a school and district ethos perspective that this is a focus on what staff and teachers want to impart on their students and how they're going to navigate their world and their future. But I just want to make sure that I understood correctly that this will be a graduation requirement for students, that they get a three or four?
So the state, which I know the policy committee will be presenting to you later in the grad requirements, require mastery-based learning. So in the future, point five credit, and we'll explain exactly what a point five credit is, but a point five credit will be awarded for mastery of the academic expectations, which will be achieving a three or four on the rubric in these six indicators throughout their four years at some point.
This might not be the right time to ask the next question, so should I maybe?
If you're going to relate it to the high school graduation requirements, you're correct.
Yes.
It's not the right time. But it'll come up on the agenda fairly quickly. Is that it?
I'm sorry. One other comment? Actually, I'm sorry. These strike me as like a little bit extrovert heavy skills to readily assess. Is that something you guys have given any thought to? I'm, I'm sure it is. What are your thoughts on that, I guess is what I should, what I should be asking?
So if I could just clarify, if a student were to be more introverted or a little shyer in the classroom, you know, what, how might we accommodate their ability to demonstrate these skills? Is that, do I understand that correctly? Okay, yes. So yeah, there's, there's been a lot of, a lot of studies on that. And, and in fact, you know, it's really interesting, some, you know, we've, we've done professional development with our teachers on their identifying their own, you know, personas, if you will, like the classic Myers-Briggs, you know, assessment. And so that is something that the teachers that who, who are very sensitive to that, bring up very often to share, you know, with the group, to talk about different strategies to reach these students. It's, it's important that we help students understand that there are skills that are going to help them, you know, maybe come out of their shell a little bit, but at the same time, we don't want anybody to feel penalized because of just who, what their personality is. So there's always different ways of assessing. The funky thing about collaboration is that ultimately, we have to assess an individual on their ability to collaborate. So it's, it's really hard to give an individual score. So that's something that we are talking about and getting back to your question, Ms. Maxon Canelli, about professional development, that is something that we've been talking a lot about in helping students, helping our teachers understand the best methodologies to do that. But it is definitely on our radar.
Mrs. Jacobson?
I was just curious if you could help us understand, and maybe parents and students as well, what the feedback expectations are on a daily basis? So we know what the academic expectations are, we have definitions for one, two, three, and four, et cetera. So let's just say somebody gets a one or a two or even a three. How do they know on an everyday basis what they're, the teacher's expecting for them to change or grow or whatever the issue is in order to improve that? So what are, is exactly, or what are you expecting your teachers to give feedback to students and how often?
So I think it would certainly depend on the assessments that teachers are giving because the assessments, not every assessment is directly related to scoring on the academic expectation. But many will be. And the expectation is that they will discuss with students through the scoring ways that they can improve. So everyday feedback, I don't know would be realistic. But for instance, if they were saying, this is a debate or maybe a roundtable discussion we're going to have about historical figures during World War I, we're all going to take on a persona, we're going to research them, so we're doing the exploring and understanding, we're going to present as a group, there's a collaboration piece of it. So I think they'll look at different components of these six indicators for when they're appropriate for the assessment and give feedback on that. One of the things we did find through our work over the last few years on performance-based assessments, was difficult to develop one or more assessments that measured all six indicators at the same time. So I think where you're going to see that individual feedback and improvement is when they're looking at specific indicators related to those assessments.
So there's no, so just so we're clear, there's not any, that we can tangibly say once a week, twice a week, three times a month, whatever it may be, it's just going to vary depending on the class, what they're doing in particular. So they can't necessarily expect everyday feedback on these.
I would say that's true, correct.
I think it's going to be important that we give our teachers a little bit of latitude and freedom to be able to design the time in which, you know, they have a curriculum and they still have to follow the curriculum, they have skills that they're teaching. So as another layer of their teaching, we want to give them that creative outlet for them to decide, you know, in small groups or at, you know, at the, at the course level, you know, these are the ways in which we're going to teach the academic expectations. So then that will determine what the feedback cycle would be depending on that.
I just want to follow up on that for a second. That raises a really necessary condition of the work that we have to do. And that's one of those things is often in this district, and like many districts, there's really been a focus on the development of curriculum and implementation guides, pacing guides. And, you know, when you talk to teachers about their needs, they feel really driven by that, those expectations of what, where am I at right now on the calendar? And to a large degree, we have to shift that focus from where am I right now on the calendar to where are my kids right now in their learning? And to add a piece to Mr. Ebling's comments, it's, it's important that we not only, the teachers not only give the feedback, but they are able to help students overcome the challenges they might be facing and growing from a one and a two to a three or a four. And that takes time. You know, so we've, we've got to shift to some degree our focus on the outcomes of the learning being about the student, not the outcomes of learning being, I completed the book, which is a vast overstatement and I apologize. But that's exactly what we have to do.
Yeah, that's why I raised the point, because I do feel like meaningful feedback will take a lot of time on these and will be necessary on a very frequent basis for students to understand that growth and how they can move forward. And given teachers are, I feel like already are so hurried as it is in terms of pacing and curricular areas, I'm a little concerned about that feedback. Because as we're already saying and we're mentioning, they're getting scores and no feedback necessarily in the way that they might be used to getting feedback. So it's just something I'm raising because we can expect all we want, but we also have to be able to provide the way in which they move forward too. So it's just food for that.
Can I just add real quick? And just keep in mind too that, that these are skills that are applied across all curricular areas. So, you know, a student could be in their English class and talking about conveying ideas, but then be in a tech ed elective as well and talking about conveying ideas. So because the common rubrics are what tie them all together. So they might, they have multiple opportunities to get that feedback in different environments. So, so it might be helpful.
That's a really good point. Sorry, I have one more follow-up. And just from the graduation requirement perspective, because it does tie into what he just said, as long as they get it in one class, they're good, right?
You mean, you mean.
Like, I mean, if they're a four in tech and they're a one in English, they've still met the requirement?
Yes, if they're meeting the skill, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pitco?
I just wanted to piggyback on what you were talking about. I think one of the biggest components for students is they start to learn about acquiring these skills, the one through fours, maybe a student self-assessment and creating goals to get themselves to be critical thinkers or to collaborate. You're talking about introverts, they don't even understand that they have the ability to collaborate or to do some of these.
That's a really important point in an underutilized strategy.
Mrs. Vitale?
Since we're talking about students, can you just share the process that you went through to get student feedback for the vision of the graduate? What types of things did they think they should know or be by the time they graduate?
So we had a focus group that met several times. We looked at our current, you know, core values that we, you know, both schools have an acronym. And, you know, we call those our core values and our beliefs of learning. We shared with them, you know, the mission of the district and other types of things and just asked them to brainstorm. And through that process, you know, a number of very similar ideas emerged. Resiliency was a very strong theme for them as well. The, you know, being responsible citizens, they are, you know, this, as we have all seen over the last year, you know, a huge shift in that focus on civic engagement. So that, that's, that's been a common theme through this year anyway. But I think that where they, their, where their vision was a little bit different than ours, was that they reminded us that, that their world is different than the world that we, that we lived in. I mean, I think we see that, you know, as adults and as, as parents, but when they can articulate the ways that they connect with each other and the ways that they were able to learn about the world that was different than most of us growing up, that really shaped that need for that global perspective, especially in the social and civic expectations.
An activity we did at Ward that was related to that too is we, as Greg mentioned, we took our core values and we divided them up among the different classes. And we ran an advisory period over that on a couple of times where we asked the different homerooms to identify and define those words for us and what they meant and use much of that language also.
So it was through like freshman to senior feedback from all. And just one suggestion, maybe you should ask students to go home and explain this to their parents and see what good communicators they are.
Should we score them on that?
You know, what kind of communicators they are or what kind of listeners their parents are.
Listeners they are, exactly. We can collaborate with them.
Mr. Peterson?
I have a few small questions that I think I'll follow up with email just for time's sake, but a broader comment relates to a lot of other kind of material, curriculum material that's come before the board recently. I noticed, one of the things, I think this is great work actually, and I think that, you know, we talked about 20th century skills, these are really evergreen skills. I mean, these are positive life skills that can apply almost anywhere, which made me think that the final video and the discussion about preparing for jobs that don't yet exist, very tech-heavy video, was a little jarring. There are a lot of people who are preparing for jobs that exist now. You know, are we not preparing for historians or writers? We had an AP art student here, entrepreneurs, teachers, and there's a large, and I worry that if we put the emphasis on we're creating renewable fuel, we're doing hydroponics, you know, I didn't, I didn't see a single real representation of art there, even though we're going through a period of technological change where, you know, you may be able to collaborate over the internet, you may be able to use 3D printers, you know, there's a lot of technical tools, but, you know, and these, and these values are important in those fields as well. But I would be concerned if by the presentation like that, we minimize those values. So just to, just to throw that out there.
Anything else from board members? If not, I just have two comments. One, I presume that the vision of a graduate was being developed at the same time that the high school graduation policies were being developed. And that the fact that we'll vote on the high school graduation policies in June, but not this document until September, that you don't see any lack of conformance between the two.
No, I think that they, while there's certainly a, a support for the vision of the graduate within the graduation requirements, the vision work is broader in its pre-K-12 plus scope and is, I think is, you know, to state the obvious, more visionary.
And just a simple yes would have sufficed for me.
I know, but I'm working with it, yeah.
Okay, I have one thing. Dr. Jones?
Yeah, and I would say, I think it's, when you look at the graduation requires, we still have English, we still have history. But how is history taught? How is English taught? That's what we should see really start to transform in the classroom and the way that teaching and learning is transforming to be 21st century.
And second, I always get concerned when there's a document called the district improvement plan where we'll be in year four of the document. And then we have this document that says, and here's where we're going forward, at least for August, I would like to have a better understanding of how they complement each other, what from the old document has been accomplished and it's kind of. accomplished and it's kind of off, what from the old document is being carried forward so that we, at least for me, I can clearly understand how the two relate to each other, if they do at all. But essentially, I believe for the board members, that we said at the end of year three, and especially because of our new superintendent, we were going to take a strong look at the District Improvement Plan. And at least I take it that this is kind of the result of that look and where we're going forward. So this will be on the August agenda as an official first read, and then we'll vote it in September, presuming that the board is ready to act in the first meeting in September, if not the second meeting. And clearly, if you have questions, as Mr. Peterson does, please do ask the staff over the summer so they can use those questions to help refine the document.
Staff or Dr. Jones?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. Jones, who will get the questions to the appropriate staff.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Onto item number five, new business, a food services program. We have a recommended motion that the Board of Education approve participation in the healthy food certification program for the school year 2018-19 with the exclusion of the sale of food and the sale of beverages not listed in section 10-221-Q of the Connecticut General Statutes. Number one, sold in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, which sale is at the location of the event? And three, such food is not sold from a vending machine or a school store. And you'll see that they were after the, after the, and so I eliminated one of the after the when I actually read the motion. Do I have a motion? Ms. Lieber, do I have a second? Mr. Peterson? Hello?
Hi.
You want to walk us through some of the financials and also the, the use statistics? Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. Dory Mansell, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. I'll start tonight, I think, with who is not here this evening. John Gerzbeck, he's been at all our meetings every time we do food service, is the VP of Whitson's. He's ill tonight, so he got a pass. Karen Gerzbeck, who was our regional manager, was promoted within the, the company. So to, all the way at the end there is Rick Emery, who's taken her place. He's the regional manager. Next to me is Maura O'Malley, who is our district manager. And this is Becky O'Brien, who's the registered dietitian. So there's four documents in the enclosure, the memo about the healthy certification, the financials, meals, and price comparison. So what we do is on the income statement, we compare last year's financials to this year through April 30th, which is, you know, what we have available to us at the time. We're doing well. I think the, you know, we had, I think, six snow days this year that always has an impact on the program because once those days move to the end of the year, you know, that, that just kind of throws a whole new, you know, challenge to food service. We also had, we have another change in staff. We have a new chef. So I think, you know, by the time we had some staff changes that had an impact on us. But we are still in the, in a, in the positive situation. There is a, in the contract, a guaranteed minimum of almost 78,000. So whether or not we actually meet that number at the end of June, we are guaranteed that amount. So, and that will more than cover our district expenses. As far as meals, you'll see, even though we did have those six days of snow, there's actually two days of meals difference between both years. We're still do, still doing well at the high school level. We're up 3% in total. Roger Ludlow is up 5%. So there, there's really some improvements there. The middle school, a little dip at Roger Ludlow, but another big improvement at Tomlinson. So overall, at the middle school level, meals were up 1%. This is even taking, you know, this is even considering the fact that there were two fewer days, meal days. And then all kinds of differences at the elementary level, which, which evened out, but still all, overall a improvement in the district by 1%. The last document is a comparison of lunch prices with both DRGB districts and Southern Fairfield County towns in the green. And we are, you know, we are in the ballpark with both closer to the Fairfield County, which you would expect than with the DRG. So we're not recommending any price changes this year. We did have an increase last year. And we think, you know, we're all set in that respect. So that's an overview of the documents. And I don't know if-
So why don't we address any financial questions people have, and then we'll go on to the operations? Questions on financial, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just had a, a quick question. I wasn't sure if, if this was a typo or if there was something. The average daily enrollment for the high schools for this year is a lot lower than last year. But I just looked at our enrollment numbers that we have on our district website, and they don't match up with this. So I was just curious how you got that number.
That's an average, we take an average of the enrollment every month. And then that's, this is an average of all the months. So it's not a real number at any point in time. It's just an average over time.
Right. But I, just because this past year, neither high school went below 1,500 in enrollment in any month. Like, I looked at every single month, and it was always above 1,500. Do you have an-
I just, I wondered about that too. And I wasn't sure if the enrollment was actual enrollment in the school or enrollment kids that have meal plans or have money in their school lunch account.
No, it's actual enrollment of the schools. But they're, they're at 1,502. Oh, I see what you're saying. You're talking about the 1,437.
Yeah, the 1,437 and the 1,424. I just wasn't sure how those numbers were there because-
That's a good question. I'll have to look into that.
Every, I looked, like, every single month, it never went below 1,500 students. So it just-
So it says enrollment, but it might be attendance or is it enrollment?
I don't, I don't believe so, but we'll, we'll check into it.
Right. Because the only reason is that I looked also at 1,617, and that number makes sense. Like, 1,502 looks about right. And I, because I looked at all the enrollment numbers for 1,617. But the 1,718, there's a big gap. So just curious how that came about.
Okay, good question.
Any other questions from board members on the financials? The meal counts are down, but you're suggesting that the way to look at this correctly is what percentage of our students, because enrollment goes up and down, are participating? And it's gone from 30% to 32%. That's what you mean by a slight increase?
Correct.
Thank you. Onto the operations.
Moving quickly. All right, I'm, again-
Introduce yourself for the TV audience.
Rick Emery, I'm Rick Emery, the district manager for Whitson's. I, Karen moved on to HR and I took over. Started here in October. I'm new to the district. I've been 10 years with Whitson's in the K-12 market, basically in New York, moved back into Connecticut, where I live anyway. So it worked out well.
Speak a little closer to the microphone.
Okay. Is that better?
You can move it actually.
Is that better? Ah, there we go. Okay. All right. Well, we're still offering demos in the secondaries with sushi and ramen noodle bars. With our new chef, I've asked him to focus a little bit more on the elementary schools. And right now, this year, it was really monotony breakers, hamburger bars, things like that to get the kids used to it. The principals seem to have liked it a lot and have requested it on occasion. But I think next year, we're going to try and focus more on exposing the children to, to expand their palates. Hummus, acai berry, smoothies, things like that. We'll try and introduce them to the elementary schools next year. We've expanded our, our search for clean labels, GMO-free products. We are, we have organic yogurts, organic parfaits. We sourced an organic chicken, chicken and apple sausage. We are looking at meatless Mondays as part of our, our movement to try and expose the kids to different, different sources of protein. So we've, we've sourced an organic black bean burrito that we're going to be introducing this month in the elementary, in all levels, I guess. So we'll see how that takes off. We did a survey this year, but unfortunately, we only had about 4% of the enrollment participate. So, you know, there's not a lot of data, not a lot of information to be gleaned from that survey. I think next year, we have another opportunity in the fall or, or early winter. And maybe we can, we can structure that survey to be a little more detailed than what we want to learn here in Fairfield rather than what global questions to parents, teachers, and students. So, and, and the comments, you know, there are always going to be comments about, we don't want chocolate milk in the, in the elementary schools. And there were comments, they were offsetting. You know, one parent or child liked pizza, one parent didn't. And so overall, we had 385 participants in the survey, the whole entire district. And our rating was about 3.2 out of 5 as an overall rating. We can, we can share the details if you want to see that at some point. I think, so that's, I would have any element on, on the operational side, I'm going to pass it to Maura and to Becky to talk about PTO involvement, teacher interactions, educational, classroom education.
And again, introduce yourself for the-
Thank you, Rick. Hi, I'm Maura O'Malley. I'm the Director of Food Service here in Fairfield. And what Becky and I do as a team is at the beginning of the school year, we have the calendar for the open houses, which have already been published. And we make it, we go to every open house and we hand out the September menu just to familiarize parents, remind them that we're here. And we have what we think are healthy, organic offerings for their students and encourage them to participate. In addition, we reach out to our PTO presidents in September and ask if we cannot be a part of, of one of their agendas, whether it's in October or if it's as late as June. Because we, we have found in the past that addressing parents really helps to, to answer a lot of questions that are out there that parents are trying, are not quite sure the answer's to. And in fact, that we have found that by reaching out to parents, that we do see an increase in participation at our schools. In addition, as Rick mentioned, we have meatless Mondays. So we're trying, being sensitive to some of the social causes out there so that children become more familiar with that. We also have every month a veg show of the month with the, which are on the menus and encourage children to share. And then Becky, who is our registered dietitian here in Fairfield, we, we work in collaboration with our school nurses. And we identify children through referral services. Our nurses are very familiar with Becky and myself. And so if they have a student that comes in with a medical condition that has to be addressed in their diet, Becky sets up a consultation and works with the parents and our managers. And I'll let Becky talk more about that.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Becky O'Brien. I'm the registered dietitian with Whitson's. So talking about specialized diets and gluten-free diets in particular, what we try to do is to give every student an equal opportunity to participate in our meal program. So when we do get referrals from nurses or physicians, we will reach out to the parents and meet with them and figure out what are things, some things your student would like to eat, as well as what things can he or she safely eat. And then we will figure out certain days that month that they would like to eat lunch with us. In our meeting, Maura's included, our lead kitchen manager's included, and the parents. And then we come up with a monthly menu, individualized, so each student can safely eat. And we twist things around each month, you know, trial and error to see what's working for that student and maybe what are some new offerings we can offer those students. Additionally, for classroom education, what I do in Fairfield is I reach out, I work alongside of Lori Mediate, the health coordinator, to offer up nutrition education lesson plans to these students and to the teachers. So I was able to offer three lesson plans this year. The second grade lesson plan that I offered was the importance of breakfast. The third grade lesson plan that I offered was my plate and food groups. And the fourth grade was how to read nutrition facts labels. So every year that I've been at Fairfield, I've tried to introduce more lesson plans and reach a bigger audience. Thank you.
Anything further that you wish to present? No questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I had a question about the survey. I know that some parents had issue with the survey because basically if your child doesn't eat hot lunch, you were exited out of the survey, which is probably one of the reasons why you had such a low turnout. Because I tried to do it and I got booted off after the second question. So I think moving forward, it would be really helpful to, you know, be able to find out why. I mean, if we're saying we have, you know, it's gone up, but it's still 32%. So it might be helpful to understand why, you know, what, what are, I mean, you know, and some, it might be any, any hot lunch that they might not want. But there may be some things that have changed or that they would appreciate or, you know, might want to explore having hot lunch if there were some changes made. So, but obviously you won't know that if you can't answer the survey.
Well, this was our baseline. So we, we tried and now we know what we have to fix for next year. So we have the opportunity in the fall to change the questions or set up any, any particular order we want to, because I, I, right now, there's a separate set of questions for parents, children, and teachers. So I don't know if those questions need to be separated here, or if you just want to have a general set of questions for everyone.
Right. I just think it would be helpful just to, you know, because they're-
We'll talk through it.
Two, two sides. So, thanks.
Mr. Asa.
My question was pretty much the same thing, but it was kind of alarming. And I think with Ms. Gerber here kind of saying why maybe the response rate was so low, but 4% and a 64 grade out of 380-something people is a little alarming. And I'm, I hear you saying that, you know, come the fall, you're going to come up with changes and everything. I would just hope and urge that that's in the works now. And once we got a 4% response at that, those wheels started turning on trying to figure out how we could get a better grasp on a greater population.
Well, yeah, this was a Whitson's survey. We need to collaborate a little bit more with the district because it was on our landing page. It wasn't, you know, so the parents had to go to the menus, find the landing page. I think with the principal's support and email blast, we can get more parents to participate next year too.
Mrs. Maxon Caneli.
First question, I was wondering what, and I'm sure I've asked this every year, so just wondering, because I'm sure you've been refining it, but what is your process for having the information available to parents and to children who have allergies? And in terms of food allergies, because obviously it's, I mean, I love the idea that fourth grade is reading those labels. That's quite the chemistry lesson, unfortunately, I would think. But in terms of parents being able to know what they could point their first grader, fourth grader towards, how do you make available to them the labels of the products you're using?
On our website, it's an interactive menu. And all parent has to do is click on the entree of the day. And then it takes them to a second page, which shows you all the ingredients and the nutritional information about that product.
Okay, thank you. Then my other question, and I apologize, Mr. Dreyer asked us for a financial while he was doing that. I was looking at all those enrollment numbers.
Too late.
So I'm backing up, but I'll do it quickly. And first of all, to Mrs. Gerber's point, it looks like all of the enrollment numbers are too low. Middle school was anywhere from 50 plus, at least off where they currently are now. But I didn't recall the middle school fluctuating that wildly.
Actually, I checked those too.
That they're all correct? Those averages?
It's just that the high school that was-
So we have 50 more now? Which means that we had 50 lower than this, and that's the average? We've gone up 100 in some of our schools? I can't believe I'm questioning Mrs. Gerber about enrollment numbers. So I'll say, I will, I will say that, but-
You want to take that back?
Yeah. All right. All right, I'm going to throw it out there, and I'm going to walk away from it. But my question was regarding the bottom line numbers, because obviously, there was a reason that we went to Witsen's in terms of as the management, because we were, as a system, losing money on this, and it was only progressively getting more costly to the district. And so since we're also in the budgeting business here, how on earth did you save $44,000? And I'm looking at line 16. What was done to secure that level of savings? Because obviously, as it is, we're going to be looking at having a difficult time possibly keeping this in the black at the, when we really finish off line 17. So...
You mean, reduction from the prior year expenses, not a budget, but reduction from the prior year expenses?
I'm going to assume I was clear, only because Ms. Muncell nodded at me, so I didn't quite follow what you said, Mr. Dwyer. I apologize. I'm putting that on me, not you.
There's not a budget here. It's, this is a comparison, one year to the next.
No, correct. But I'm wondering how somebody saved $44,000? And then how, how do we hope to be in the black at the end of this year? Because all of the trending here doesn't look that way.
This was done with, oh, this was done with April's numbers. There was a, an issue with the, the last day of the month, we had an order come in, a large order, like $20,000. And it was processed, the bills were paid, but the product wasn't inventoried. So the May numbers just released today. She just got the invoice this afternoon, I think. But there was a $47,000 turnaround in May. So that's not reflected in these numbers, but now we're in, we're in a much better position than we were. We had the $20,000 we recouped from April, and we made $27,000 in May.
And then, not to put you on the spot, since you are new, but do we know that something like that did not happen last year? Because obviously, we were looking at April 30th to April 30th, but...
Right.
Last year is June 30 numbers.
Not column one.
It's April 2.
Right. But if you compare column one to column four...
Okay, yes. Sorry.
Well, Maura just whispered in my ear, the last day of the month wasn't on a Monday last year, and our orders come in on Monday. But I, it does, it rarely happens. It was an anomaly, and it was just an oversight on the local team, but they didn't inventory it. They paid the bill and didn't inventory it.
So that, that is a response to the overall question of the bottom line. Regarding line 16, which are the district expenses, which they, which has nothing to do with, the change there is we had a, a change in staff, the secretary, there was turnover, so the salary's lower, and that there's also repairs and maintenance in there. And that's what fluctuates the most from year to year.
Gotcha. Okay. So do we get those, a report on that final number to know how the, it ended up going for the year?
Normally, in the budget book, there is a page on food service year-end, but I don't know whether it's always one year behind or not.
Yeah, I don't recall either. Okay. Thank you.
But in terms of the guarantee, while it says 23,960 at the moment, the year-end report will say 77,776.
Correct. Or more?
Or more.
Okay.
Other questions on operations? Questions on operations? Okay, so let's then move on to the motion that is in front of you. This is the annual renewal of the Healthy Food Certification Program. You'll see on the budget, it's worth roughly $650,000 of income to the program. And do we have any questions regarding continued participation in the Healthy Food Program? No questions? This is a voting item, so out to the public. Any member of the public that wishes to come forward and speak on the Healthy Food Certification Program, feel free to step forward. Seeing nobody, back to the board. Are we ready for a vote? I'm not going to read the whole motion. It's in front of you. All in favor of the motion, as shown on the agenda, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your service. Mr. Cummings, I think you're back at the table again.
And while he's on his way, I'll just mention two things. I know the board was aware on the teacher evaluation that we did put a waiver into the state. That was denied. Mr. Cummings is going to talk about the group that he has worked with in order to put in these changes. But I also just want to note that Mr. Dwyer asked a good question. He's like, why is teacher evaluation with the curriculum department used to be with the HR department? All of our teacher evaluations, as far as accountability, still go through the HR department. But just as a reminder to the board, when we did some restructuring, when it comes to the actual teacher aspect, you know, leadership aspect, we wanted that to go through our actual teachers. And so it goes through the curriculum department. Mr. Cummings.
Good evening. Mike Cummings, Chief Academic Officer. I'm here tonight to just briefly introduce and talk about the reasons of why we've put in a teacher evaluation plan for revision or proposal. The plan has not been revised in the, at least the last three years since I've been in district. It does have, require a board vote for the, by the, for the State Department of Education if we're going to make any changes. As I said in the cover memo that was included with your board packet, essentially, the task that we saw this year was to move the plan from a compliance plan to a professional learning plan, or at least to begin to make that move. I don't think our work is done. I think I can speak safely for the committee. We did the things that we thought we could do this year in the relative little time we've had. We've been meeting really since, I think it was November, December, we started to develop these changes. So a lot of what is you, is in the changes and is in the overview sheet were our, our attempts in any way to, to ramp up the professional learning. And as I said in the cover memo, that's primarily through moving the observation process to a formal, minimum of a formal observation, and a review of practice for all teachers years three and above. And that is the minimum allowed by the state, which is one of the other things that we were trying to do, was to reduce the number of observations, in the interest of making better, it was really a question of improving quality over quantity. So that was part of the, the major change in the plan. And the other part is to look at and broaden the number of ways in which teachers can work together. So as it's denoted in the plan, we identified a number of learning opportunities, learning structures in which teachers can work together to fulfill their professional goals. And with the intent, as we're doing in several different ways, to promote, as I even mentioned earlier, when we were talking about the vision of the graduate work, to promote teacher collaboration. So I wonder if there's any questions specifically that you'd like me to address?
Jen, please. Jen, Leeper.
Just a really quick question. On page 33, there's a note that says state mastery data may not be used to measure an educator's SLO. And I was just wondering about the "may not." Is that "may" or "may not," or is that "cannot"?
Cannot. The State Board of Education, a year ago, initially, when teacher evaluation put together, that was one of the major components of it, was going to be standardized assessment. A year ago, the State Board of Education removed that requirement from the plan.
I, I know it's not a requirement, but I would imagine if a teacher had every student getting a four, as an example, you might want that included, because, just as an example. So, but to have it be a possibility, but not a requirement.
Right.
I don't remember that being the case.
The language that's used is "if appropriate." So that's a conversation between the administrator and the teacher.
Other questions from board members? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
A few questions, and this is just as a reminder to the board, as well as the public, maybe through the chair, to Dr. Jones. How, how do you estimate the cost of what something like implementing, you know, is again, one of those mandates down from the state? What would you estimate that cost is, and what does that factor in?
We had that question during the budget, and we were trying to calculate, and we asked all of our leadership how many hours they spent. And all I can remember is it was a phenomenal amount of hours. And I don't know if you remember the exact number, but if you take that on an hourly basis, it's tremendous amount of time. And, you know, it is a system that we have to live with, and unfortunately, across the country, most states are dealing with the same thing. And I would say, most of us don't find the systems highly valuable if we could actually go in and redesign them from an educator's standpoint and not a legislator's standpoint.
My recollection was that it was on average, it was about 10 hours per certified staff member. 1,500 certified staff members, you do the math. Times an average salary. However, one thing that should be noted by this board, when we adopted this, we did not add any staff to implement it. And so the real cost, I think, is opportunity cost of things that our administrators are not doing in service to parents, or students, or the district, because they are checking boxes.
Hopefully, engaging more authentically in the evaluation process, but sometimes that's checking a box.
I'm sure that happens every day.
Absolutely. One question I had regarding the parent feedback goals. One, I was wondering how, because I can't recall from elementary school in terms of how publicized it is that they're seeking that feedback. And then I was wondering, I understand not doing it by class, because the numbers can be too small, for example, in the elementary schools, for that to feel especially about. But why not at least by grade? As opposed to whole school? Because I just think that a lot would get lost.
I believe the language of, of the legislation is that it has to be by school.
Yes, it is. And that's not something that we have any purview over, right?
No.
Yep. Okay. My fault. And then I was wondering, just if you could speak to, in terms of the inter-rater reliability to this? What are the internal systems for helping to normalize that across all of our administrators?
We have a legislative requirement that we calibrate ourselves. We do that as part of the August advance. We go through an exercise that's provided by the Marzano folks, essentially, to use the Marzano, that which, because we use the Marzano framework. And then the evaluators engage in an exercise, looking at a comment video, and then rate it. And we look for, I think it's within a point of each other on the ratings.
And I'd add the same question about the note. And just in general, what is your sense of what kind, and I would think maybe now with this, administrators might have some more time, but the informal sense of dropping in? Because obviously, there's one, when, when a teacher's prepared to put on the dog and pony show, that's one type of evaluation that can be very useful. But then there's also not that. To what degree, or do our administrators even have time to do that?
We had surveyed the administrators before we made this decision on, on kind of where we wanted to go. And it was, I'd say, 2/3 of the administrators, it was roughly 2/3 of the administrators wanted the one formal and the one review of practice. The one review of practice, you can do a grade level together, or a PLT together. You can do, so you can, that could be a group. I think that the... Could you repeat that? I want to make sure I...
Can I actually jump in? I think I can answer that a little bit. When we look at secondary, I would say overwhelmingly, we've had feedback from FEA, as I see Bob Schmelzer sitting back there, that, for instance, our housemasters are so busy in PPTs and formal evaluation, they're rarely, they don't have the time to do the walkthrough informal. You'll see that reflected, I hope, in next year's budget. You know, each year, we're trying to tackle different issues, and that's been a challenge for us. And that'll come along also with the review of the special education audit, and looking at how can we free up some of their time, and how the PPT process is operating in secondary. So I hope that answers, but it's, they're pretty well tied up between those two issues.
And that was a sense I had. Do you see this helping to improve that?
I think this is going to help to improve, along with the systemic changes that we need to make in the PPT process and some of those other components.
This, this, I'm sorry, but this improves the ability to have the conversations about instruction, and that helps drive moving this, the obligation around teacher evaluation away from a compliance to more of a professional learning and exchange of ideas.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Leeper?
To Dr. Jones's point, and Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, I did crunch some of those numbers, and happy to share to just give a scope of what the state is requiring of our administrators. Can make a couple of different assumptions, but the range is between 10 and 13% of our administrators' time is spent on teacher eval, which in terms of man-hours, costs us between $650,000 to $818,000 a year. And that's assuming they're doing no, no teacher evaluation, so it's not quite right. But, you know, this is a big bulk of their time. And I just want to highlight also that Dr. Jones stated she did submit a waiver to the state requesting some leniency on this, and unfortunately, were, was rejected, because I know that as, as a body, we get a lot of pushback, why we're not requesting these types of things from the state. And just for the record, because you said it quickly, that you did, and we did not get that leniency this year. And hopefully, we can keep nagging them, because as a state government agency, they get leniency from the federal government in terms of a flexibility waiver for accountability that they put on all of us. So I'm happy, I'm happy to continue to nag on behalf of this next year as well.
May I ask a quick follow-up to that?
Yes, please.
Because that's where it gets, that's why I wasn't sure what the, all I wrote down was an estimated cost. So those kinds of numbers were not compelling to the state? That feels like a very unsympathetic audience. But those numbers in the waiver, it was just denied? We don't get a reason for the denial?
It's still bound to the language of the race to the top grants and the, the grants that drove a lot of the mandated requirements under ESSA and those types of things. So why I get annoyed with them, and I think I'll just do too, it, to some degree, their back is against the wall as well. They can't change, if they're going to get federal money, they can't then change the requirements for us.
Okay. Thank you.
My response would be a little bit different. They passionately believe in the rules and regulations that they have, and they're very, very tight on giving waivers to anything. Anything else from the board? It's a pretty, it's a document that is highly regulated by the state. This will be on the second June meeting. Do we have to approve this, or not?
You do have to vote on it to approve their changes.
It will be at the second June meeting for approval. If you have questions between now and then, it will facilitate our second meeting if you get to Mr. Cummings or Dr. Jones with those questions.
And just a reminder, if you can correct me about the process, Mr. Dwyer, or Mr. Cummings, I believe if we had wanted to amend anything in this, if we did, it actually has to go back to the committee, because they have to sign off on it. Am I correct about that?
Correct.
Yes.
Right. So in any amendments have to be, please get them vetted ahead of time, because this isn't something that's just, okay, board, and then we send it on. It does have to go back.
And to clarify that, the District Educator Evaluation Committee, we can't approve anything that they've not already approved, just the way the state system was set up. So, so Mrs. Maxon Cannelly is correct. Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is first reading graduation requirements policy. And this is enclosure three, but it's A, B, C, and D documents. And I'll look to Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Okay, thank you. So brief intro, my first draft of an intro was rather lengthy, and then I realized I don't want to overwhelm you, and I certainly do not want to walk line by line through this policy. That's really for you to do on your own, and please, I'll say it now, and I'll say it at the end, please get me questions, not only ahead of time, but quite frankly, preferably by next Monday. And I say that because in policy next Tuesday, we already know one thing that we might need to look at and tweak. So it's definitely going to be on our agenda next Tuesday, and I would be much more comfortable having the three policy committee members discuss suggestions from the board, or suggestions from the public, that the three of us can talk about, as opposed to getting something brand new on the 26th, that we haven't had a chance to talk about or get more information on. So again, I'll repeat that at the end as well. So obviously, as you could see by the paperwork you received, this was driven by state statute reforms, to which, in both wording and the spirit of the state statute, we tried to stay true in policy. true in policy. As promised, staff, Mr. Cummings came to us in April, and so we have had this conversation throughout April, throughout May. We did add an extra meeting, just to make sure that we could get this to you tonight. And I do promise you that staying true to the wording, and especially the spirit, was a little bit harder than you might think. Because this is personal. You know, when you're looking at a graduation requirements policy, you're immediately thinking of your child. And what do you want your child to have? And to say that we had ideas beyond this policy is putting it mildly. I'll, and actually, that's what I was going to talk about next, is the areas that we debated, which ultimately, we did not pursue in this policy. Just to give you an idea of some of the things we talked about, we did talk about having that 2018, 2019 computer proficiency requirement eliminated. That's still in there for that last year. We discussed, and then did not pursue, not designating any mandatory credit for the fine arts vocational arts. We did end up putting that in. We did not pursue an idea that had been brought forward, about .75 credits for PE. We did not pursue the idea of switching. You'll notice how we do credits is going to change. Fairfield's a little bit different from everybody else, which is where you get those 43 credits. We had talked about switching sooner, and instead, we're going to go with just when all the changes come into effect, that's when we'll do that change. And then other content things, that we ended up not pursuing. Media literacy, which is something that we do believe will become part of a middle-school conversation. Financial literacy, community service, a philosophy requirement, an ethics requirement. I'm still holding out someday for requiring maps in there, but, you know, it just, when you think of the things you want your child to learn, we really had to keep coming back to, this was trying to empower more student choice, even when there were so many areas where we couldn't do that. And so, eventually, those other things went to the side. Some areas of this, we did come, staff did come with a recommendation, things, changes that occurred in policy, driven by the policy members, was, for example, the .5 assured content experience began as just hitting proficiency on the SAT. And so, we requested that staff come back to us with that, as we called it, shopping list. And we, and I believe staff came back with a tremendous list, that while, yes, a standardized test is one way, you can fulfill that .5 mastery-based assessment, there are absolutely other options in there, from portfolios, to other tests, to a capstone project. So there's a tremendous number of options on that list. Something else which policy requested, which you would see in the language on page two, that wording there in yellow, that, for example, yes, it's one semester equals .5 credit, but some of our courses, specifically AP Science, AP Art, I'm still not sure about that technology course, if that does or not, but those other two AP courses, students are, have been required to put in more seat time, and we wanted them to get the credits. Not impact the GPA, but to get the credit for that seat time. And then finally, another change that came out of policy was that initially, social studies had come to us with a 2.5 credit requirement, and we did switch that to 3.5. So that's just a quick, you know, as I said, two topics there were things we talked about and didn't pursue, as well as things that specifically were changed as a result of our policy discussion. Much of the else came from staff, and ultimately, all of this has been run past staff. And so, I will stop there. That's a quick introduction, and obviously, if anyone has questions now, great. Otherwise, I will repeat. Please get us questions, and most importantly, if you are considering language changes, if you could possibly get that to me by Monday, it'd be appreciated.
Does a member of your policy committee wish to also make a comment, because I know you've worked hard at this?
I'll just, I'll just say briefly that, as a newbie, I grossly underestimated how much time and effort that this was going to take. And I really just want to, I want to applaud Jen Maxon Cannelly's leadership in this, in this matter. She saw very early on that we were going to need extra meetings and longer time, and more input, and all of that was absolutely the case. We could have spent six more months on this policy. You know, the one objection that I would make, is that we didn't pursue things. Sometimes when she says we didn't pursue things, that means that after an hour of discussion, we decided to move on. So, is, this is the product of really, a large amount of debate and input from, from people throughout the community, throughout the administration, teachers, the public. So I just, I want to applaud her, most specifically, for being, you know, hard-headed, and working hard, and efficient, and all hours on this.
Ms. Jack Gibson?
I'd echo the first two policy committee members' statements. I'd also add that we are one of the first districts to actually do the work that we know of. So we really were kind of torchbearers here in this, didn't have very many other things to look at, or compare to, and had to really dig in deep. And I know that for myself, and I'm sure for my colleagues, can say that we're trying to be very conscious too, of how this comes out to pass us through us, because I'm sure that others will be looking at us. So, just with that context, for me, that's how I'm going into this conversation.
Aceer, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Gerber.
So, a couple of questions. Ms. Maxon Cannelly, you mentioned about the community service, and I did read that in the legislation with, if a student does the 50 hours, that they would begin an award and everything, but just briefly, like, super brief, was, anything you can add to that, like, why that wasn't one of the options?
If, sorry, Mr. Cummings, would you be willing to take this? Because this was, involved a staffing issue, administrative oversight, it's, as again, all of the things that we ended up not pursuing. It wasn't for not seeing the value in it. But, Mr. Cummings, if you'd be willing to take that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that this was one of those things that we looked at, that we, we tried to think about the practical value on the other side of the policy, and where, being conscious of budget decisions, or the impact potentially on budget decisions, and to really do a community service project type of, well, considering the number of graduates we have every year in the Fairfield Public Schools, would, would really, taking a lot of staff time, probably would have required the hiring of additional staff, and as well as perhaps strain the resources within the community, to be able to support that level of involvement for each of our students.
Because you envisioned that many students choosing that?
Given the level of a commitment of our graduates, or our students, I think we would be concerned that quite a number would, would want that opportunity.
Okay. My next question is regard, yeah?
I strongly supported the idea of doing community service. I very rarely, very, very rarely say, "The administration may not want to do this, but we should do it." This would be an example of that thing, where I'd say, "We should do it." And if it's only an option, not a requirement for every student, the idea that we would not have the administrative capacity to do something that would benefit the civic engagement of students, and their learning of that, I am disappointed.
I would...
I accept, I accept the committee's discussion, and advice, and all that rest, but I would join with you in saying, it's something that I wish they had considered.
Yeah, I would echo what you said, because I think one of the most important things in, with me growing up, was community service. And I think, piggybacking onto my next comment about SAT and ACT, whatever standardized tests, I didn't do well on those. But, I was very involved with community service, and have been, and that helped form who I am today, and also helped me get into school, when my standardized test scores weren't that good. That being said, going on to this SAT, PSAT, SAT component, I'm wondering if someone could speak more to that, because I understand now that it's a list, and as you said, that it changed from, I guess my first question is, so the administration originally came to you for this, for this component, with it just being that?
Correct.
Okay. And so...
So essentially, it would have been the top line under where it says mathematics, and the top line other, under where it says evidence-based reading and writing.
Okay. Well, I applaud the committee for exploring that, and not accepting that, because I think that is a big mistake, and I just have concerns with it even being in there.
A few things with that. Number one, again, I think, when you look at the list, and obviously, you have, there are a number of ways to satisfy it. And, when you really think about what we want to be sure any student leaving us can do, these are things I would hope any student leaving us can do. And so that, aside from what they get measured with in class, you know, that, that idea of the mastery-based diploma assessment, this idea of splitting it into the skills, and now, all of you are far more versed in that first .5, in terms of the assured skills, that's what Mr. Hatzis and Mr. Ebling spoke of, and Mr. Cummings. But this idea of an assured content experience, yes, I don't think it's a bad idea for staff to have that as a, we want to be sure that they have achieved a certain level of content understanding. Now, I am no one to sit here and advocate, and speak passionately to the merits of the SAT, or ACT, ever. Let me be very clear, if you try to take me out of context on that. Absolutely not. But that idea that somebody is communicating at the level that would be commensurate with junior-year English, yes, I do think that's something that, as a content requirement, that we want to be sure of that. It also is, provides a measure that's, at first, it starts with the SAT, I suppose, and I might be putting words in Mr. Cummings' mouth here. The rubric, I can see some parents, if that were 1.0 credit, and again, this is, it's ultimately, at this point, it's now up to the full board. It's not up to the three of us in policy anymore. We could have gone 1.0 on just the first part. But I can see some parents getting uncomfortable with something like that, where there's nothing standardized about it, that it is, it's harder to understand how that will be happening. And again, that's where the initial line of just an SAT, that at least is something that is a definitive standardized assessment, that is very clear-cut, right or wrong, sort of thing, in a way that a rubric doesn't provide you with that. That said, we still moved away from strictly that standardized test, right or wrong approach, by adding this list, but the idea that expecting that content demonstration of mastery, that we were still comfortable with.
Okay. I mean, I appreciate your response to that. I still have reservations about that, and that even being said, I would have, I'm not questioning anything you did, but I would have loved to see more than a .5 credit, and applied to other things on this list, and maybe more than, because while I see that you're saying that somebody mastering an SAT in a certain proficiency and whatnot, doesn't necessarily mean, it could mean that they test well. It doesn't necessarily mean more than that.
Absolutely.
And I have a real problem with even having this, because I think we're setting the precedent here, that we're encouraging even more testing, standardized testing, when they're doing it from the time they're in elementary school through, that we're testing these kids to death. And now we're giving them, you can look at it as, we're giving them an out, if they test well, or we're not, there's just so many things that go into it, and I just, I don't want to belabor the point, and I don't want to drag us through the night, but I just wanted to state my feelings on this. And that, while the majority of this other stuff in this document looks great to me, and I think you guys did a fabulous job, I just wholeheartedly disagree with this aspect of it.
And just one point, point of that, that I would want to reply to, as a reminder, in terms of adding assessments, is the reminder that the junior-year spring assessment of the state is the SAT. Now, obviously, not everyone's going to meet it, but that is certainly a significant number, and hopefully, a rising number of our students would be addressing this requirement on a test that they're all taking likely anyway. Now, obviously, then there's the issue of how many iterations do they do, but there is that, where this is not an additional requirement. It's something there, in the junior year of spring, they are doing.
I understand that, but when I'm looking at enclosure 3D, and the benchmark for graduation for the SAT, I don't necessarily agree that those scores are appropriate. But, that's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Pitco, did you want to follow up on this particular point? Do you mind if, Christine? Ms. Vitale?
I share Mr. Ace's concerns. And I appreciate that everyone's taking the SAT, but I also know how many students are paying, and parents are paying a lot of money, for college prep classes, and SAT prep classes. So I'm not really sure that a, a high score is an indicative measure of how successful our school district is. And I also think that since kids are already spending so much time preparing for the SAT, that it might be an easy out. And I wouldn't blame them for being an easy out. And I would hate to think, you know, when the conversation of graduation requirements first came up, you know, years ago, in the talk of the capstone project, I thought, what a wonderful opportunity. And I feel that kids are probably not going to take that opportunity, because they're taking the SAT, so why would they, with everything else? So I agree with you. I also agree, the value of community service. I think that for these credits, something a little more creative, I would like to see that in there. I think the SAT, those kids that are going to be using it, I'm kind of confident that they'll do just fine, and get the resources they need to perform well on it. I also worry about the inequities for students who have special needs, and what that means for them, the socioeconomic aspects of it, so, reservations. But I, I understand why it's in there, but am concerned.
Ms. Pitco?
May I reply to one thing she said immediately? Because that's something that I would want to be out in the parent community right away, when you mentioned students with special needs. Just a reminder that through the PPT process, any IEP can be, can have explicit reference, if it is not appropriate for that student, and again, this, through that PPT process, requirements can be addressed differently, and modified accordingly. There are students that that score would never, ever happen, or be possible. So ju, just a reminder that that's another safeguard. We didn't put that language in here, because it's already covered in law. So, as a reminder of that, but I do want to draw people's attention to that reference to the portfolio. That is a very creative opportunity to demonstrate content knowledge of both math, as well as reading and writing. So just, it's down on the list, perhaps easy to miss, but that's quite independent of standardized testing.
Ms. Pitco?
I actually spent the last year going to CAPS PD on different ways to do mastery-based learning in our school, and what different high schools are doing to meet either a career pathway, like a Health and Med, or STEM, just completely restructuring the high school model. The thing that concerns me about putting the SAT in here is, it's now a use of measurement in our high schools, but it wasn't always. And, you and I both know, from the classes we've taken, the way it was designed, so it concerns me that it could be something that a student could decide to use that as their measure, rather than do something way more rewarding, that would show all of those great skills they were talking about. I understand the value of the district using it, asking their students to take the PSATs and the SATs, but I don't think it should be a graduation requirement. There are far too many students who are not on a college path. They're on a career path. And I'd like to see focus on that, rather on preparing our students to take the SAT. Oh, one more thing. Is world language a state requirement?
Yes.
Okay. I ask because of, there are some special needs population students who don't take world language, and I would hope that the district, once this is adopted, would plan for how those students are going to meet this requirement.
The district is already planning. We've, that's something that's come up in policy a few times. Ms. Frankel has already spoken, I believe, with Mr. Mancusi about this, so that, that's already a discussion taking place exactly to that point, because it's not an appropriate curricular choice for all students, and that to fulfill that requirement, I believe there's probably going, maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, a, a new course created, but they will be in collaboration between those two professionals, so I think, I look forward to seeing what that ends up being. But yes, to your point, we're looking at that. They are looking at that.
Ms. Gerber?
First question, I think will probably be really simple. I just want to make sure, because I've got about three different versions. I printed out at home, we had it here. So, what we have here, enclosure 3A, revised 611, which is 6146A. That is what we are reviewing.
Correct.
So what we got, that was 6146A, B, C, D, E, F, that is no longer in existence, that has become 6146A?
Well, B, C, B, C, and D are still, well, B and C specifically, well, B is the old policy, C is the state statute, D is a...
No, 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 no. I'm not talking about enclosure B, C, D.
Oh, I'm... Oh, I'm sorry.
Like the little, on the original, see, it's confusing, because you've got two different sets of A, B, C, D, E.
Gotcha.
And I just want to make sure that I have everything right, because I've got all these different versions here and.
Be guided by yellow.
Correct. Okay, so I just want to make sure, so, but, so basically, this one is just 6146A now. There's no B, C, D, F, E, F in the policy.
And it replaces the existing A, B, C, D, E, F.
Right.
The letters in the old policy were the page numbers, we didn't get to formatting that in the policy committee, but we can certainly look at that next Tuesday. It's just, it's just how we were numbering the pages.
Okay, it just, it was confusing because.
The difference is the current, the policy that exists currently.
The one just says A.
Right. The new one just says A.
Actually, to Mrs. Gerber's point, she's correct, that with our new way of doing the policies, we do need 6146, B, C, and D added to the page numbers that we do, we didn't catch that, so that.
Okay. All right.
That will be added. I didn't even think of that.
Yes, Meg Brown caught that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So that's my first question. My second question is regarding the SAT, and this is the enclosure 3D here with the scores. Do we have any sense, have we looked at if this was, you know, say, if retroactive, going back last year, how many students would not meet this criteria?
We did look at that. It's, do we know when we're going to get the new set of numbers from March?
We have them, but we haven't been given clearance to let them out. It's around.
Because we'd wanted to show them to the board in comparison to each other?
Yeah. I forget often, I, it's, I think, if you think about, is Mr. Rasmussen, is Dr. Rasmussen still here?
No. The person hiding behind you.
Do you have that number?
Yeah. I just talked earlier. So one of the, one of the things is, because the policy actually talked about, it's not just a straight SAT score, so you have to take a consideration to all the scores taken through at the time of looking at the PSAT when they take it in 10th, they take it in 11th, and then also taken when they are in the SAT. So it's not just a simple calculation of looking at one test, just in my brief calculation of working in the back on my computer, it was around, specifically talking for math, around 65% of the students meeting the benchmark as identified for the state.
But to Mrs. Gerber's point, do we have the 2017 proficiency percentage compared with the 2018 proficiency percentage in math?
Yes, we have those numbers, but again, it's not just taking a single test score, you have to look at it as a student over time, taking over the two administrations of the PSAT and the SAT combined, and taking what is their greatest score.
So in other words, if they hit the proficiency as, on the PSAT in the 11th grade, then it doesn't matter if they drop below it for the SAT in the spring.
Right.
So that, those are two iterations to look at, so between the two.
Between three, the three assessments, whenever we administer the PSAT and the SAT.
Right, but we weren't counting PSAT 10th grade.
We administer that, yes.
So it's two scores?
Yeah, we get two PSAT scores for each time they administer the same test.
Right. So for the math proficiency, we have an 11th grade PSAT, we have an 11th grade SAT in the spring.
Mm-hmm.
So those two combined for 2017, 18 was 65%.
Yep.
Do we know what it was for the 2016, 17?
I do not have those numbers on me, so I would have to calculate.
Okay, so we'll get those?
Yes.
Okay. That would be great, thank you. No, I, well, I just, that concerns me.
Can I have a follow-up? First, I have this follow-up here.
I will follow up to Mrs. Gerber's point. When this first came to us in policy and we saw that on there, my first question spoke to most of Mrs. Vitale's and Mrs. Gerber's points, that I was immediately concerned about our subgroup populations and just kind of knowing our performance on this. So far, I did ask for that data to be run, so we do have that for this year. And while there's an overall number, perhaps, I think when you get more into the subgroup populations, those numbers become even more extreme, so like 0% of ELL, so, you know, things like that. So I agree and I share the concern with that, and I'm so thankful for you for running the numbers and providing that to us, because it's very enlightening, and it did very much so drive our changing the language of the policy and coming up with more options to meet this .5 requirement. So it's very much in the forethought of our minds, for sure.
Sorry, I apologize, if you could just wait one second. I apologize for, if I'm not understanding this correctly, can you just elaborate on what you said about it's over time, so if they, if they meet a proficiency earlier on, they meet the requirement, but not, sorry?
How the, how the PSAT and the SAT, the same score on the assessments mean the same thing, that the students can do the various concepts and skills. So if you meet it, if you, if you get a 530 on the PSAT, it means pretty much the same thing that you get on the SAT later on, later on that. So it's not necessarily assessment, it's about what does the assessment tell us in terms of the ability, how the student will be successful based off of college board's analysis, because they define success as being, having a 75% probability of earning a C or better in a entry-level college course. So they assign that value, doesn't matter what assessment that it is, if it's on the PSAT or the SAT.
So, so let's take, for example, a PSAT score in mathematics of 500, or, I'm sorry, 540.
Yeah.
And then when they take the SAT, they get a 500.
Mm-hmm.
What does that do to their ability in meeting this requirement?
Based off of the language of this, they would, they would meet the graduation requirement because, because if you, I believe if you look at the policy, it says, on the PSAT or the SAT.
Okay, so they can meet this, okay.
So it's not just one test, one high-stakes test, they have multiple opportunities over time to reach that, say, that particular benchmark score.
Okay. Thank you.
Jen Lieper. Uh, Mrs. Lieper, Ms. Lieper.
Unfortunately for the poor policy committee, they've already had to field a number of my, my thoughts on this topic, but since we're talking about this particular component, I'll start there. And I, there's two angles to see this, which is, one, if we're not educating students to reach what this proficiency level is, maybe this is a good way to put a spotlight on those students, so that we can ensure that we are doing other things to have them fulfill what it is we believe to get them to be successful graduates. So that's like, the one, I just want to throw that out there, as that's a side that hasn't really been aired yet.
Thank you.
But I also do think, I think it was Ms. Vitale and Ms. Pitko, Ms. Pitko put a good point, which is, for example, the Capstone, and that if we only have a certain segment of our population taking that because perhaps they couldn't meet a benchmark score, and I get that it's a laundry list and it's an or statement, so if you hit any of them, you're done, and, and I think that's great. But if we think that the Capstone is something that's very enriching and meaningful, then maybe that should be something we're encouraging all of our students to do. And then just as a point of clarification, is it an and or an or between the math and reading and writing?
And.
Okay. And then just.
One from each list.
Correct. Okay. And just one also nitpicky thing about the SAT, which I'm probably preaching to the choir here, but if reaching that, that benchmark score is indicative of having a 75% chance of getting a C in a college course, that doesn't exactly scream mastery to me, and if that's what the purpose of this is, is to demonstrate mastery, bless you, perhaps we could be more creative.
Could I speak to that?
Sure.
I didn't, are you done? I didn't want to interrupt you.
Sure, please, I have, I have a bunch of different comments, so.
Please, please make them afterwards, but we do have to be mindful of the time, and we will have more time for discussion at the second meeting.
So I just wanted to speak to that, because I think one of the issues with this is, this is the third year of the new SAT, and if you look at the College Board website, one of the things that they caution on is that drawing conclusions based on the three years of data like, like that, it would be, would not be good policy or good science. I think that one of the things that's being lost in this discussion is, we're thinking of the SAT as we've often thought of the SAT when we took the SAT, which is this kind of benchmark by which colleges grade us as applicants. Really, when you think about, and that is the purpose of the SAT, but the other part of the SAT, as it's changed in its format, is it's really a reflection of the content that, as Ms. Max and Cannelly refer to, the content that a high school junior should have mastered by that point. And that's how we see it, that we look at it as an indicator of, have we taught our students well to that point? In some ways, it's a parallel to the SBA in 3 through 8. And so what's being lost here as well, and I, I want to point out and emphasize is, our students are going through their four years of high school, and really, their K-12 experience, not as just being passed from point to point without our interactions. The purpose of the assessments and looking at the assessment results and responding to them is that we fill in the gaps and we provide the interventions for students. So the issue particularly around the subgroups and the, and the most neediest populations, you know, and you said it right at the very beginning, there's a possibility of thinking this in a different way, that is the possibility we're thinking about. How do we use these scores to determine how we interact with kids and bring up their performance? Not because, and whether, and I'll be honest with you, whether you put it in the graduation policy or not, that's our job, that's our responsibility, we have an accountability to that. We can't be passively letting kids go by and say, well, they got a 480 and that's the best they can do. So we, whether you put it in policy or not, we have an obligation and a responsibility to respond to that, for all kids, but particularly for those that don't have those advantages of the tutoring and that type of thing. It's not teaching to the test, it's not an SAT prep course that I'm talking about either, it's really teaching kids the content and the skills.
Mrs. Lieper, you have other comments?
I'll be quick, I'll be quick, and mostly just because I want them on the record. I am a huge advocate for teaching our youth personal finance, because I think that it is a life skill, perhaps more valuable than any other that are, and maybe that's an overstatement, that's a gross overstatement, but it's very, very important to how you live your life. And I understand it also has FTE implications, and that's probably what makes it really challenging to roll out, but I think that if we're trying to produce responsible citizens, that having an understanding of how to manage the personal finances, especially when we're sending our students into potentially loads of student loan debt, and what that means, and how to manage that is really important. So I'm just going to pitch it again, even though I already did, and also ways to be more creative with the physical education credit, and that for, for our students who are really involved in the arts, there's lots of ways to meet art requirements within the bounds of the classroom, and there's fewer opportunities for students involved in athletics to earn credit for those pursuits. And, and I get that's just sort of like the timing of your school day, and that's how it is, but I think that if there were ways to, to do it as, I'm, you could code it as an independent study for, for an athletic, or whatever, and that our student athletes then could free up this, this credit requirement to pursue something else, and that's all I have to say.
Other comments, final comments. Well, before, before I give you the last word, other questions that you have on the policy for Mrs. Max and Cannelly's benefit, Mrs. Jacobson, did you raise your?
I don't have a question, but I have final comments.
Then you'll get the next of the last, final comments. Mr. Asa?
I'll, I'll email.
Okay. Anything else? Before we go into final comments, if the board collectively said that line that says SAT or act subscore, or whichever line that it is, we stripped it out of the policy, would this comply with state law?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Jacobson.
Okay, the, I just, I hope you guys did read the state statute, because one of the comments that I wanted to make is that for this mastery-based assessment, they did not define that in statute. So now, all 169 districts have to come up with whatever they want that to meet, which means we are perfectly, have pure freedom to make that whatever we want it to be. I'm kind of wishing we had had this before tonight, to be honest with you, because I see that our academic expectations are in the policy for this piece, but not necessarily our social and civic expectations. I mean, I just, I'm kind of thinking that that would have been a perfect other .5, since the first .5 is in there. And that, and when I listened to your presentation tonight, when I listened to the social and civic expectations, which I'm understanding need to be developed yet, and there's a timeline on that, but the verbs to care, to connect, to contribute, to impact, I just thought would be a perfect other .5 as that content as demonstration. But that's just happening tonight, because we didn't have that. So I'm a little frustrated with the statute, because if it had been clarified, we wouldn't be talking about it. What, what are you laughing at me?
Just a little.
I know. I'm, I'm very, I'm very frustrated with the statute. I am. Sorry. The scores particularly, I did try to get that changed a little bit, because even though we're saying that the state expects 530 and 480, there is a college board 11th grade benchmark, which is when our kids actually take it, that is 20 points lower, and I would love, and I have asked for this chart of data to be rerun for our kids using the actual 11th grade, and does this picture change and get bigger for us if we were to change that? But sticking with how the state defines it is how it ended up coming out of policy at this point. There was language that I had suggested as well for special education students, but as Jen already spoke to that, because it is in the Greenwich policy, that it's already covered in statute, that's just why it's not in here, but it does exist. I also asked for ELL language to be put in here for, say, our newly arrived ELL students who come maybe in junior year or even senior year, and how are we going to accommodate that? So that was also very important, and within some of those statements at the end, where the chief academic officer and staff, you know, there are circumstances that can be addressed through this policy, so that makes me feel better about that piece of it. The PE piece, I generally agree with Jen Lieper as well, and, you know, I wish there was a way, there's certification issues and things around that, so that's an ongoing conversation. But it's just a few of the things that I, personally, I don't think that the statute and the one following the Education Department meant for the SAT to be this. I, I don't think that. I think that they did mean Capstone, I think that they did mean a senior thesis, I think they did mean a senior project, I think they did mean a collaboration, civic, social, something at the end of their senior year. So it's a conversation, and we talked long and hard about this piece, and I'm glad that at least now we have this menu, but I'm happy to talk about it more.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting? Sorry, I needed to say my piece, sorry.
A couple of points, I would like to reiterate, because I should have hit it harder, and I think it was a valuable point, and thank you, Mrs. Lieper, for bringing it up, and Mr. Cummings for hitting it again, because that did come up, the whole notion that the SAT, the PSAT iterations and taking of it can drive very, very needed remediation work, and that it is an important, just as a piece of information, that a student who might be performing well in school, but they are missing non-knowledge insight, and that this is starting in middle school, and that's an activity, an action that would be happening regardless of this being included, but that it is an important thing to mention, and I should have. Regarding the Capstone, just a reminder to everyone, first of all, I do actually think that our other .5, actually, while it is not Capstone per se, offers a lot, Mrs. Pitko, we're here to hear this, and I might reach out to her, but it does offer some of those same ideas, of those very creative ways to demonstrate that you can hit certain skills, and that while not exactly what you'd call Capstone, it still carries with it some of that opportunity for creativity. And in terms of stripping it out, I do, and that, again, it's going to be the will of the board on that, just a reminder that while right now, if, you know, the numbers are correct just for math alone, that 65% of students who are hitting that, if you were to take that away and strip that line out, that that is now all of those students, and again, or something completely different, but if I simply look at the rest of that minus. something completely different, but if I simply look at the rest of that mathematics list, you are absolutely talking about staff impact, because the majority of what else is on there, because if we're going to strip out SAT, it would make sense to strip out subscores and ACT as well. Everything else on there is going to involve collaboration with staff at a level we have not, or we aren't presently staffed for. At least that's how I would envision, you know, when you really start talking about portfolio on a massive scale, or some of these, there is that potential. I mean, it would depend, I suppose, on what we did with the list. But right now, obviously, a majority of our students could demonstrate mastery on a single day and be done with it. Meanwhile, of course, they're also fulfilling 24 and a half other credits as we prepare them to be graduates of Fairfield Public Schools. So I just point that out as something to consider. And regarding the PE, believe me, that came up many times. And that, right now, just as a simple explanation, and your idea of the independent study I find intriguing, but because I've received this question from many members of the public, I'll just explicitly reference that. The idea that a varsity athlete can't get PE credit for that, part of the issue there is that they are not all certified PE teachers who we have as coaches, and therefore that is an issue there. But I like that idea. So I'll, last time, please, if you have actual language change, now, if you're just talking about stripping something out, actually, even there, it'd be worthwhile for us to know in policy, because if we have a discussion and agree with you, we could be sending you back a new draft. We might possibly be doing that anyway with some minor tweaks, we'll see about that. But just if you could, please get them to me by Monday, I would really appreciate it.
Mr. Asa has asked for one more comment or question?
Mrs. Jacobson mentioned Greenwich. How, Ms. Max and Cannelly, how many other districts have actually completed graduation requirements?
I don't know of any.
So has, Greenwich has? So we'll, in essence, we're like in the front here?
Second.
Okay.
And ours are better. No.
Does that answer your question?
Does Greenwich have a SAT in theirs? Out of curiosity.
According to Mrs. Jacobson, I, okay, just because I work there doesn't mean I read their policies. But, so according to Mrs. Jacobson, it's not in there, and yet I know for a fact that we are talking about their having to reach proficiency. So I'm not sure what that disconnect is between the language that Mrs. Jacobson have looked at and my practical experience of being in the district, but I assure you that we are using it as a requirement. So I'm not quite sure what's going on with that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
This will be on the agenda at the second June meeting for a vote. Please pay attention to Mrs. Max and Cannelly's plea to get questions to her in advance. I had wanted to put board goals on the May agendas, and it got crowded out. I insisted to put it on the June calendar, but by the look of the time at the moment, I would suggest that we have to defer this again unless there's board, excuse me.
Sorry.
Unless there is board desire to address this tonight, I'll put it on the next.
Sorry, I missed what you were saying. Can you repeat that?
Okay, we're on item number D.
Okay.
And I don't think we have time for item number D.
All right, all right. This, I'm the Robert's Rules Don'ts, but can we table it so that it comes up at the end if we have time? Whenever the proper motion is.
The end will be executive session, so I'm just going to skip over it. With unanimous consent, I'll skip over that item. Six, approval of the regular minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the VOE regular minutes of May 22nd. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Vitale, Ms. Leeper seconded. Any questions? Having none, all in favor of the minutes, please raise your hand. It is.
Oh, no. Sorry.
Is unanimous?
No.
No.
Abstaining.
Okay.
I wasn't there.
You went there. So therefore, eight in favor, one abstention. Eight oh one. Superintendent's report.
Obviously, I'll keep it very, very quick. On item A, that's listed here, just letting you know, on your Friday packet, we will send out the regulations, which is for the policy that we talked about several months ago. I just wanted to remind you, I've already had at least three times where different board members have reached out about interpretation of the policy. So the regulation is obviously done by staff. We don't bring that to the board for a vote. It's pretty much a cut and paste, exactly what the board wanted. So just look that over when it comes to you Friday, and so that you can see if you have any questions for me. On the.
Dr. Jones, just to clarify, this is the politics policy, correct?
Yes, yeah, what did I say?
Well, it's not listed on the agenda.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yes, that is for the politics. For the proposed VOE meetings schedule, that is the sheet that's in front of you. And this is really just, it's in draft, obviously, for board feedback, but it's trying to plan out the year with some of the bigger topics that we know are still sitting, sitting there for us to tackle. What I've tried to do is, and again, the board may not like this approach, but it's looking at having three board members or so that are attached to certain items so that when we're generating questions in preparation for the board meeting, because they're so big, being able to look at those pros and cons and being able to come prepared, having input from the board. And you'll notice the K-235 on September 25th, that was already a discussion item where they were talking about pros and cons on the finance committee. So we kept the same people there. Looking at, for instance, the policy committee, and that may be too soon, I don't know, but that's a really big policy for us to tackle, is the policy update for the Booster Club. So I went ahead and thought it was a good policy to have on here that we could aim for, just so staff can also plan to be at those meetings to assist. On the backside, you're looking at the town halls were plugged in. That's according to the same type schedule that we've had this year. All of the other dates, budget dates, mirror pretty much what we are accustomed to, and it does take us all the way through June 25th. And again, you may look at a schedule you've had previously and see something that's missing, but at least according to Ms. Brown, we don't normally put this schedule out this early, where you're looking at, you know, the whole year ahead and trying to get as many of these big topics on there as we can. So we welcome feedback.
The purpose of this is really to focus on the topics.
Yeah.
In the order of the topics, we, normally, the chair will put it out in November, following the November elections, and then it gets officially designated in December. You can probably take these dates to the bank, but out of protocol for the chair of the board for next year should be the one that actually officially puts it out in front of you. Any questions at the moment that people want to ask the superintendent on either of the two topics that she mentioned? Mrs. Gervin?
I just want to clarify here. So for the things that don't fall under the finance or policy committee, like for instance, I'm looking at, I'm under the racial imbalance and impact of noncompliance. So are we forming a separate committee and meeting in advance, or?
What I would actually, what I would propose is that we actually post a business meeting so that I can have, you know, three members of the board that are meeting to be able to give feedback. And this one, for instance, it's a big one, racial imbalance and the impact of noncompliance, because every time that comes up, there are people who say, "Why don't we just fight it? Why are we even trying to comply?" And I think having the discussion about what is the tenor and tone of the board as far as what are the pros and cons of either way? What is the cost in legal and litigation to go in one direction versus the other? So it's getting, it's giving feedback for me before we get to the meeting.
So we would have a separate meeting, then, the three of us?
Right.
At some point before October 9th?
I'm looking at it very similar to what we do for the budget right now, and it happens to be the officers, but we have a meeting where I get guidance on the budget from the officers. That's very, very helpful as I'm setting the budget. These are such big topics that I think it would be great for me to have input about what is the historical thinking, what is the thinking now on some of these topics before we get to the board meeting, so I can be more prepared with staff as well.
But I would suggest that Dr. Jones is using the term, have a business meeting of these three, is probably a term that she is accustomed to her prior districts, and that our bylaws would require us to officially.
Right, we'd have to.
Name those three people as an ad hoc committee for this purpose.
Something, right, okay. That's what I'm just saying. So we would have to meet some other time, the three of us, and then the full board would discuss it on the 9th.
Because three people would not make a quorum of the board, and in order to comply with the bylaws, I'd have to name. So if you don't like your initials where they are, let me know.
And, I mean, is there some thought, is this going to be one meeting? Is it going to be two, three? Like, I mean, this is a pretty major topic, so.
Well, and that's why I think it's really difficult on a major topic for me to come onto, like, the October 9th board meeting and think that we're going to be able to tackle a topic in one meeting. So I think on some of these topics, you know, we could spend four hours, and that may be equivalent to two meetings, or it could be two or three meetings because that's what works for those three people. And I think it can be, have a lot more flexibility for me to get input without being so rigid about when we're meeting. Okay.
And I think I'd suggest that maybe in August, we officially name these ad hoc committees, and that perhaps we think of this date of Walter Fitzgerald and ECC of October 23rd, that if we appoint these three people in August, that they meet at their schedule and that they have a report back to the full board about their meeting. And if it takes one meeting to do that, fine, and if they think it takes more than one meeting, just get your work done before that, the date that's shown on here, assuming that these all stay in the same dates that they are now. Other questions? Other questions on this in particular? The only comment I would make is that from time to time, board members will want to weigh in on an issue, to give guidance to the ad hoc committee or the committee. And so if there's any issue here that you think should be scheduled for the full board before it gets into the details of a committee, speak up or hold your piece somewhere between now and August so that we have a sense. The real purpose of this is to give the board members a chance to say, what should we be talking about and how should we be talking about it over the next year? Ms. Pico?
I'm just a little confused, because even the policy committee presents something to us at a first reading, and then we vote out at a next meeting. But you're saying that three members are going to meet for a period of time beforehand, and then we're going to vote?
No.
Okay.
We're going to report. And then based on the report, I'll pick an issue, magnet program, that the three people say, "This is worth exploring." And you bring that to the board, and the board says, "Yeah, we agree with you, and let's explore it until it gets to a reading and a vote." You might come and say, "We've looked at it, and it doesn't make sense to explore it at all."
So I'm just a little confused, and please don't take offense to this, but then what's the point of the finance committee? Because I was under the impression that when you guys started, you were going to be looking at things like this, and that we already had meetings in place to do these things, or they were brought to the full board, and we discussed these. I don't see the point in having separate ad hoc committees to do the things that the full board is going to discuss at this table anyway. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, good. This may be just a way to spread the work among different board members who have expressed interest in a particular subject, but this is a suggestion. If the eight of you come back and say, "We don't like this idea." Come. Ms. Vitale?
I guess I just need clarification also, because when we were talking about the finance committee, and at the time, I thought there should also be a facilities committee, and there was concern about starting too many ad hoc committees, and we had the whole discussion about working meetings, and at that time, it said that we couldn't have a working meeting. And it's not that I'm opposed to them, but now, the way it's broken up here, I think that, you know, a magnet program is currently part of the racial imbalance plan as it's approved. So I would think that you would talk about those two things together, and, you know, the K through two and the three through five, it's how we're using facilities, which I would think, you know, this is just me, you would look at Walter Fitzgerald and the ECC, and where you would find space for that. I guess, so it's, I'm kind of on the same page with this, Pico, on that in terms of how, how we're, I understand the need for more guidance to the superintendent and staff from the board, since now that we're having more committees than possibly just two. So I just.
Let me clarify, I don't see this as a committee. I think, I see this very, very different than a finance committee that meets every month, that's ongoing all year. I see these, and like I say, it could be one four-hour meeting, or it could be two meetings, just to get input on, you know, what are the issues that we're looking at? And really, the K-235 magnet program was already part of the finance, that's why it stayed that same group of people, so I didn't see that as an additional. The racial imbalance and impact of noncompliance, that's just really having, being able to have a discussion with some board members. I find that's one thing that's really missing for this board, is we really don't discuss things because we don't have time. It's like tonight, it's already 10:30. We could have probably gone for the graduation policy another hour. I mean, you just, that's one thing that's missing. And these are such big topics, we could have a meeting just for one of these topics and have additional meetings with a board of nine. And I think it's what is the desire of the board, but the idea that we could put something like racial imbalance and the impact of noncompliance on just a regular agenda and have a huge discussion, it needs to be half of the agenda. That's a big topic. So I was just trying to find a way to manage it, because these are not normal, I guess, agenda items. They're pretty big.
Other comments, please? No, you have the floor.
Okay. And I agree with you, and I appreciate that. I guess it's really just, it kind of goes against a previous discussion we had in terms of how we were going to tackle some of these things. And then maybe we just need to just revisit the best way for the board to give you the guidance that you need, and maybe, you know, going back to when we were having special meetings before, we kind of got, you know, sidetracked understandably by some of the facilities discussions for Sherman and Mill Hill. So that was not, I guess, just a surprise more than anything else.
Well, just, if, I mean, you're saying that these are going to be ad hoc committees, so that means that these have to be public meetings. I mean, they have to be noticed meetings, open to the public. So just wanted to put that out there, just want to make sure that that is correct. So we're talking about scheduling additional ad hoc committee public meetings on these topics that will then go to the full board?
I think, sorry, go ahead.
There's no doubt that we could, three of you could get together and say, "We want to talk about a topic," and that doesn't have to be a public meeting. These kind of topics, if you come to a board and say, "We've met privately, chatted about this, and here's our recommendation," the public might feel a little excited.
That was my point, because I know when Dr. Jones referenced, you know, meeting with the officers about the budget, that is a private meeting, a very, usually fairly brief meeting, but if we're going to be talking about racial imbalance, you know, as a committee, I mean, that has to be a public meeting, I guess, is what I'm saying. So it was more of a rhetorical question, but I just, and again, it comes down to, I mean, yes, tonight is a really long night, but we had a 30-minute meeting last month, so we could have added some items to the agenda then, just saying, so, you know, and these are topics that the entire board will need to discuss, I would believe. So that's just my concern, is that I just, I'm worried about creating more work by having additional meetings with three members and then having to have a meeting with the full nine.
We, I'll only comment, we had an ad hoc committee that did not work. We agreed to have a series of special meetings of the whole board to talk about that, and that did not work. And so this is another attempt to methodically look at the variety of issues in front of us, and maybe this won't work, but somebody ought to come up with a better idea, if you wish to come up with a better idea. Ms. Vitale?
I think she was first.
Well, you still have the floor.
All right, no. I think the special meetings, oh, do you want it back?
No, no. No, I want it.
I think the special meetings, just to be fair, really, we didn't really get a fair shot to let it really play out, because we had to approve Ed specs for Mill Hill that we weren't expecting to approve so quickly. You know, and I think that if we had the board goal discussion, I think that this would have been something that I would have discussed for a board goal on how to improve communication with the superintendent. And review our communication with the public and how we address these issues, because our agendas are getting jam-packed, and that's something that I think that we as a board need to discuss on how we should move forward, as opposed to just kind of being surprised by it on a piece of paper.
It's a proposal out early so that people can discuss it and think about it. This is not cast in stone.
Okay, thank you.
This is Max and Cannelly.
So a couple of things. I mean, I appreciate, Mr. Dry, your point of, "We know this needs more time, here's one idea of doing it, let's figure that out." I mean, I don't know if it would be possible at the meeting on the 26th, that there could be a couple of, and no, I'm not trying to sign myself up to do this, but laid out a couple of scenarios of how would this be. of how, how would this be operationalized, to use that phrase? What exactly does this look like? I mean, one thing I'll remind, well, if you're paying attention, but a year ago, when Mr. Calabrese, Mrs. Gerber, and myself met, because we'd wanted to look at the bylaw regarding public comment, we did not do that as an, we happened to let people know about it. We met in public, but it was, in fact, not a meeting. It was the three of us sitting around talking about something. And so, that idea, like, at first, when I saw this, my notion was not ad hoc, but simply, and, but I'm not sure if this is what you meant, Mr. Dwyer. But when I look at something like the, you know, Walter Fitzgerald ECC site review options, that the idea being is that these three people are charged with, you know, getting together, doing some homework, being prepared to have the in-depth understanding on it to lead a board discussion. That's kind of how I was seeing it. And that doesn't necessarily have to be an ad hoc committee. It's, you three are charged with meeting and, and doing homework. But I don't know if that's the best way to operationalize this or not. But I think that's what we're struggling with a little bit, is exactly how is this working? Because what no one needs to do is, is waste time with thinking it's going to be one thing, and then watching it play out is not what, is not the way to help Dr. Jones in terms of understanding what we're thinking, get the information. But I do think maybe in June 26th, if we could have a couple scenarios of two options, here's one way you could operationalize it, and here's another way. That's just one thought.
So, I will put this back on the agenda for, that would allow discussion of it on the 26th, and invite whoever wants to get together and on a kind of a off-to-the-side discussion, come up and present, maybe there's two different ways to look at it, come back and suggest that. If you're going to do that, please meet with the superintendent, so that your idea fits in with her allocation of staff time for that.
I think Dr. Jones wanted to say something.
Ms. Pitco, followed by Mrs. Jacobson, do you want to comment?
Well, I was just going to say, I think the informal nature of what Jennifer Max and Canelli was just saying is what I was thinking. I mean, that, that was very much in line with what I was thinking. I wasn't thinking a formal ad hoc, let's get everybody in town charged up that we've got this huge big topic that three people are going to make decisions on. I don't want to scare everybody. I really was looking at it as a conversation, and being able to work together to prepare for the big discussion.
And I would say, if the board is comfortable with that approach, and does not, and will accept the commentary from the public that we discussed are very important, because I've gotten emails, I hope this issue is going to be always in public, whatever the issue was that they were emailing me about. So, if you feel comfortable with approaching it that way, we've done that in the past, we could do it in the future, just that you have to be able to tell the public that that's the way we agreed to do it. Who else raised their hand? Ms. Jacobson?
I just had a question, if you are open to people, if this is something the board wanted to pursue in an informal way, maybe kind of more electing to be on something rather than assigned, or do, like, maybe they have a particular interest or something? I just wasn't sure of the assignment, where that, where those were coming from.
Yeah, we might have gotten the assignments wrong, so feel free to say, move me off of this, put me on that, or put me on something as well.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Ms. Pitco?
In all honesty, and the effectiveness of being transparent, I really feel like these need to be special meetings with the nine of us. These are huge topics facing our district. I really don't want to give the impression that we're just going to come together as a board, have a discussion. When you're talking about your policy on graduation requirement, look how long we took to discuss it. I just don't feel that this is something that we could say, like, okay, we're going to elect to a special committee that's going to meet informally. These need to be special meetings where the nine of us meet and discuss this. And if there's something you want to email to the chair and Dr. Jones, that's a different story.
There's two or three different alternatives talked about here, and do we do it as a business off to the side, not in public? No, we should do it in public. We should do it as a special meeting for all of these topics, which means that maybe there's nine special meetings to cover all six of these items. That's nine meetings that you have to, nine of us have to say, please sign up for. So, there's just a lot of considerations. And so, next, on June 26th, let's hash them out. Ms. Lee?
I understand the full board sentiment, but also, I'm really thankful that the three of you Policy Committee people spent hours and hours and hours hashing through grad requirements, so that you could bring that to us, and we could have a lengthy discussion, but a fraction of the legwork you guys have already done. And some of these big topics might be reflective of, of that type of process, in, in my mind.
So, how about last comment, and we'll make sure that this is a continuing discussion at the next meeting. Ms. Pitco?
And if you have an informal meeting, how does that work with FOI requestable? Because you're talking about such a huge topic.
Up to four members of this board can meet anytime they wish to talk about anything they want, without it being a meeting, because it's not a quorum. Once you get to five and above, it's an official meeting. If we name this as an ad hoc committee under our bylaws, then all meetings of those three people have to be done in public and noticed. So, if you don't name it as an ad hoc committee, and as long as you only have four board members there, it complies.
Can I ask one question?
Unless it is all six Democrats, and they are meeting as a caucus on this particular board.
Okay, I'll just restate it again. I think they need to be special meetings of the nine of us.
Heard loud and clear. Ms. Vitale?
Would these three members be meeting with staff, without staff?
With staff.
And when you, when the, when you met, did you meet with staff or without staff? When you and Anthony and Ms. Canelli?
And in the public library, the three of us. There was no staff.
Okay, thank you.
But that was a bylaw and public comment. That's a much smaller topic than racial imbalance.
I just, that, it's not just board meeting, it's staff and board.
Right, it's staff time, yes.
Yes.
I do invite those who have alternative thoughts on how to do this, to chat among yourselves, as long as it's not five of you. Thank you. Onto committee liaison reports. Any committee liaison reports? Ms. Pitco?
Okay, so, we're going to start off with SEPTA. They're having their end-of-the-year meeting tomorrow at Taco Loco at 7 o'clock. Kind of informal, if anybody wants to come. I actually have two meetings worth for Board of Health. The first one, let's go over the, there's a lot here. Regional Response Plan. The Health Department's been working with the Regional Preparedness Group, and has passed new preparedness plan for the region, and a new high consequence disease annex to our public health emergency plan. Director Cleary has been assisting Chief McCarthy and Senior Center Director, oh, I'm going to mess this up, Terry-
Gegenkak.
Thank you. Gegenkak, with efforts in spearheading a disaster mental health services team in Fairfield. The long-term goal is to develop a robust disaster mental health component response for recovery from emergency situations. Steps taken include behavioral health, providers breakfast meeting with speakers, and communication with the clergy association to provide pastoral care. Recently met, Hurricane Sandy brought in substantial monetary and tangible good donations to the town. Director Cleary, Chief McCarthy, and Director Gegenkak, met with Jennifer Barahana, the Executive Director of the Newtown Sandy Hook Community Foundation, to begin planning the framework of a system to manage monetary donations, and determine the best way to use the funds to have the most impact for both victims and first responders. Several town department heads also met to begin laying out the legal structure. We also talked about EpiPen recall. Due to the recent recall and shortage of EpiPens, our current supplier was not able to ship supplies to refill the expiring supplies in town. Then, in this past meeting, not only did we get our EpiPens, we're good to go. We've got more than enough. We have a Stop the Bleed campaign, as a result of Fire Department. Stop the Bleed campaign, a recent close call on one of the school's assistant director, Mitchell, was contacted by one of the school nurses with a request to purchase tourniquets. So, one tourniquet has been ordered for every school in our town. Assistant Director Mitchell began to analyze the number of visits to the school nurses for the year. While the total number of visits is down slightly, the amount of time spent during each visit is up over 100%. So, we're keeping our school nurses very busy. And in this past meeting, they also talked about they're looking for substitute nurses for the upcoming year. I believe they will not be posting them until August 1st, if you know of anybody looking for position. Unfortunately, we don't pay the highest when it comes to school nurses. In the wake of the Florida school shootings, and heightened concerns of school nursing staff, Assistant Director Mitchell invited Lieutenant Edward Wa, I'm going to mess this up, Y, thank you, to speak at the staff meeting. As commander of the Fairfield Public School Safety Unit, Lieutenant Y was able to answer many questions, and he's going to be scheduled as an additional guest to staff meetings. They have been doing a number of water quality testing around town, and it's interesting to know that Lake Mohegan has a beaver, who is living along the-
A few.
Well, so, my notes. It's not, there's only one beaver, apparently. The other ones are musket rats, and they're much smaller. And they thought there was beaver dams, but they're not. The beaver's just living along, anyway, it was very interesting to learn about. And that's it for today.
Other committee liaison reports. Ms. Lee?
I'll be, I'll be brief. The Finance Committee is talking about moving over to eBoard, which would be paperless for the board, and it, I don't want to speak too soon, but it seems like it's almost a no-brainer, where we'll be saving money, saving paper, making less work for central office. So, we've asked for the representative from CAPE to come and present to the full board on, on going over to, to that. And then, we had a discussion about grade reconfiguration at the last meeting, and the following meeting, we're going to discuss a breakdown of potential savings, and then also just pros and cons to the principal.
I forgot one thing. Sorry.
Is the second beaver open?
Of course.
Let me, let me finish this first. Any questions for Ms. Lee?
This is actually, also is a policy question. Has the Finance Committee started to tackle corporate sponsorship yet?
So, we are also talking about corporate sponsorship, and we can do it. And Dr. Jones has already spoken with both athletic directors. They have a specific person in mind that they think would be the right person to go out into the community and recruit sponsors. And so, in the next meeting, we'll also be getting an update about that person's role, job description, and sort of the scope and cost of that.
Excellent, thank you.
Ms. Pitco?
They also reported, the Board of Health meeting, that there is a new blood test approved by the FDA that can detect concussions. So, I have that in a moment to read it.
Okay.
Holland Hills moving along, and no major issues.
PTA Council met last night. They approved their budget. Their big initiative for the summer is they're starting a whole new PTA Council website that they're hoping to roll down to the units, want to rebrand PTA Council, and their awards ceremony is Thursday night at 7:00 p.m. at Roger Ludlow Middle School for all the PTA Council awards, and-
I would imagine that all nine of us are going to be there as a fan club to two of our members who are getting awards that night, Thursday at 7 o'clock at Roger Ludlow Middle School. Any questions for Ms. Vitale? Mrs. Gerber?
Just an update, that the Ludlow Building Committee actually canceled their meeting, which was supposed to take place tomorrow, simply because there's no action to be taken. But the plan is moving forward with the windows starting as soon as school is out next week.
Mr. Asa, did you say you had? No, no, Mr. Peterson?
Just for the sake of completeness, the Board of Finance didn't have anything related directly to us, although they did talk about the disposition of monies unspent near the end of the year. There was a minority view that they may want to spend some of that money on paving, but they decided against that as a kind of sense of the board. But, again, not a direct impact on us.
Open board comment? Any members of the board have a comment that they wish to make under this?
I just wanted to make a motion to suspend the rules and extend the meeting.
Let me get the open board, and then we'll quickly do that. Any open board comment?
I have a quick one.
Mrs. Jacobson?
Just wanted to say happy graduation to our graduates next week, because we won't be meeting until after then. So, can't wait to see y'all in cap and gown.
I just wanted to explicitly recognize, in case anybody is watching this video, since we all of us here at the board know this, but just an explicit congratulations to Mrs. Vitale and Mrs. Pitco for being recognized this Thursday, and that it is a wonderful event that PTA Council works very hard on. And it's just, it's, it's a tribute to an awful lot of volunteer hours and commitment, and just congratulations on being recognized.
Okay, I don't see anybody in the public there, so we'll skip over the public comment.
See them all?
A motion to extend the meeting past 11 o'clock. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Jacobson, all favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. We are now moving into executive session. And for the purposes of the Fair TV, we will be retiring to the superintendent's conference room. We will be meeting, and then adjourning from there. We'll not be taking any action. We'll be coming back to the public. Having said that, and that's so that you can clean up your court. The recommended motions of public education hereby moves to enter into executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes, CTS 1210B9. Director, Mr. Asa, all favor, raise your hand, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.